Okay, I would like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast and call the December 12th, 2017 regular meeting to order with all board members present. And please rise for the pledge of allegiance to be presented tonight by the Army JROTC color guard from Lincoln High School.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lincoln High School. Okay, we just learned of some very sad and really shocking news. Our former and our first actual chief information officer at San Diego Unified, Daryl Legace, who was the architect of our I-21 program, passed away last weekend. And I would like to begin this meeting with a moment of silence in Daryl's honor. Thank you. Thank you.
And I know that I speak for the whole board, that our condolences to Daryl's husband and all their family.
Thank you, Vice President Viser. Okay, if you wish to address the board on any of the agenda items today and your name is not on the speaker list, printed on blue paper located at both entrances to the auditorium, and if you've not already submitted a request for public testimony form, please complete the form and submit it to Ms. Ward, our board action officer. Speakers on agenda items will be called on to speak during the discussion of the agenda item. Once discussion begins on an item, no additional public speaker requests will be accepted. Our bylaws provide that public testimony on agenda items is limited to a maximum of 20 minutes per consent and/or action item, allowing for a maximum of 10 minutes per opposing viewpoint. Public testimony speakers are limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker, and depending on the total number of speaker requests received, the time may be reduced to two or one minute each. The time limit for speakers on today's agenda items will be announced at each item. Okay, could we get a motion to adopt today's agenda?
Second?
Please vote. Okay, and does any board member wish to remove any item from the superintendent's consent agenda? Do we have any speakers on the consent agenda?
Yes, there's a list of items that need to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. J-1, 7, 8, 11, 21, 23, 31, and 32.
Thank you. Those items are being withdrawn.
They're being withdrawn from the consent agenda. You have speakers.
Oh, we've got speakers. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ward. Okay, so can we get a motion on the remainder of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Any discussion? If not, please vote. Okay, thank you. All right, we will now hear our student presentation from the Knox Middle School. Our student interview on restorative practices and trustee Whitehurst Payne, would you like to introduce this item?
I would like to say that I think you'll be amazed by this presentation. On last year, I went out and visited the school twice and saw the students in operation, and I hope you'll enjoy it today. So we look forward to this presentation. Thank you.
And our Area 1 Superintendent Bruce Bivins will introduce the presentation. Hi, Bruce.
Hi. Good evening Superintendent Martin and esteemed board members and student representatives. It is with great pleasure that I set the stage this evening in my introduction of Knox Middle School and the restorative practices work that has been taking shape and hold on the campus. It is a genuine example of true partnership between district and school, and school with feeder schools and local colleges, that this story has taken shape for the betterment of our students, staff, and community at Knox. What I have witnessed since last year's inception of the restorative work is a dynamic student-centered cultural shift on campus, where the safety, security, and sense of belonging of student needs are being met through the circle process, which has been used proactively to build community and to deep-trusting relationships amongst students and staff. When you review Maslow's hierarchy of needs, these embedded stages of safety, security, and sense of belonging are absolutely necessary and foundational for our students to self-actualize their fullest potential academically, socially, and emotionally. At Knox, this shift is occurring much to do with the vision of the school leader and the restorative practices work on campus. At this time, I would like to introduce Principal Heather Potter and the students at Knox and Lincoln to tell their story and the journey of this incredible work together.
Good evening. I am extremely proud of the work of our staff and students at Knox Middle School. A year and a half ago, we began a journey to strengthen our work building a positive middle school culture and climate, using the data as outlined in our California Healthy Kids Survey. It was imperative to strengthen our program in a method which centered on fostering connections and building trust. At the center of this work was a common belief in the core goals of building positive relationships and having a school climate that centers on respect, empathy, problem-solving through conversation. This journey has led us to our beginning stages of implementation of a restorative practices model. This transformation has been possible through our collaboration with the district staff in the Restorative Practices Department and in partnership with the National Conflict Resolution Center. Knox also believes so strongly in this process that we have a full-time restorative practices coordinator on our campus to support implementation. Our students and staff have taken ownership over this model. They are leading the work in our community circles each week. We have also extended the model to our parents. Each month, we host a parent circle at Knox to build connections and positive relationships with our Knox families. Restorative practices have begun to lay the foundation for success and support at Knox. We know that this work will continue to become stronger over time, and our Knox team is committed to that effort, as we know it will have positive social, emotional, and academic outcomes for our students. I'd like to welcome our students to share their feedback on our journey.
Hello, my name is Dahlia Diaz, and I am a 4.0 circle leader at Knox. Knox began running circles last year. All Knox students sit in a community-building circle every Wednesday morning. Circle leaders meet on Tuesday's afternoon to go over the agenda and then lead the circles first thing on Wednesday mornings. Knox currently has over 650 students and staff in each circle. Each Wednesday, there are 25 circles going on in over 67 and 8th grade circle leaders.
Hello. Hello, my name is Elmo Barnes, and I'm a 3.0 circle leader at Knox. When I went to Knox in 6th grade, it was a place with a negative reputation. Last year, we started circles and advisory, and it was a good time for everyone to get to know each other. The negativity around Knox started to change. I was invited by Mr. Ponsford to attend a circle training at USD and became a circle leader this year.
Hello, my name is Najia Darin. I'm a 3.3 circle leader at Knox. Thank you. Being a circle leader has taught me strategies to avoid conflict. I have also taken on a leadership role by interacting with classmates I don't know and introducing myself to new students at Knox. I've been more open to speak in public and enjoy counseling classmates at school that are going through tough times. The confidence I have from leading this work with peers makes me feel that I can confidently share my ideas during class lessons.
Hello, my name is Melanie Balanzar, and I'm a 4.0 circle leader at Knox. Circle leading has helped me trust and have confidence in myself as a leader. I can now communicate with classmates and teachers more effectively. Circle leading gave me the confidence to run for ASB office. I'm happy to say I'm the vice president of ASB at Knox. I take pride in being seen as a positive leader at Knox.
Hello, my name is Niana Wilcox, and I am a 3.0 circle leader at Knox. Last year, I was not making positive choices and had a bad attitude toward teachers and classmates. Since being a circle leader this year, I have matured my grades, improved my attitude towards teachers and classmates. Has improved. Circle leading has helped me open up to more people and speak to people I don't know.
Hello, I'm Azon Erteaga. I'm a junior at Lincoln High School. You know, they told me, this is my son, you have to have a speech written down, and so I typed something about an hour ago, and I'm like, okay, I'm gonna stick to my script as much as possible. But I thought, okay, I've never really read off a script, so I'm gonna, it's probably gonna, I don't even know if that's gonna work if I read off a script. So, most of you know that I worked for RAC relations for 15 years, training, culture proficiency, LBCDQ, doing trainings. Towards the end, we started doing a lot of work with what they're calling restorative practice, but for a long time, we did restorative circles with young men. And the difficulty was getting staff to really understand what restorative was, getting staff to not suspend kids so quickly. This has been a struggle that's been going on for years. So when I heard that, you know, we were moving in this direction, I was really excited about it. But I also understood, the excitement, with the excitement comes all the obstacles, and knowing how difficult it is, because we're talking about changing behavior in human beings, which has been so ingrained, and that abuse of power that happens so quickly. So to change that behavior, I knew was gonna be really difficult. Can it be done? I started realizing this, see, I didn't even read my script. I started realizing this when, they said, okay, so they placed me at Lincoln this year. I'm there full-time, and I love it, by the way. They said, we have students from Knox that have been doing this work, they're already here, here's a list, and I was like, really? Do they really know what this work is? Have they really been doing the work at Knox? They gave me a list. I called the students in, and I was like, are they even gonna show up? They came, all of them showed up to lunch. And I started asking, so what did you learn? What were you doing over there? Right? And I was, I'm not gonna lie, I was actually pleasantly surprised that they were actually doing the work that we have been working so hard to do. A few weeks, a few months later, these students on a Saturday, just a couple weeks ago, from Lincoln, that are 9th grade now, went back to Knox and worked with those young people over there. They're super excited, we're gonna roll this work out on a larger scale at Lincoln in the second semester. And I have to tell you, I'm a believer of the work that was done, and in my incredible arrogance, it all happened without me, which I think is really beautiful. I really do. So I'm gonna end with this, so it'll be happy that I read off a script. I wanna end saying, look, a lot of times, we think education, you gotta learn to read, you gotta do math, you have to do this, but we forget that education is teaching young people compassion, teaching our teachers compassion, not just the young people, right? But when these young people start implementing this at a large scale, that's where we're gonna see the change. And I'm convinced that this is the generation, these are the young people that are doing it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Urban Carter. I attended Knox Middle School last year, and I'm currently a 3.7 GPA student at Lincoln High School. I attribute my skills and discipline in school and life to help myself and students that also got to, that were able to learn at Knox. When I promoted, I didn't know, like, last year, the circle was there. I didn't know what was gonna happen to them, so I was like, but luckily, Mr. A was able to contact us and help us continue the progress of what they were already doing. Last week, a few weeks ago, we met up with the Knox students to get in the circle, and we were asked what our thoughts were circles. Was it important? Will it help us succeed in life? Was it worth continuing the practices? We all agreed that, yes, it is important, because it like helps us grow as a person. Some of the skills that circle leading has gave us was critical speaking skills, patience, and being able to understand that not everybody is the same. Some people grow at different rates, you know? My peers have also mentioned that being in circles helped them be more open to people, like, talking to somebody that they never would have talked to if it wasn't for circles. Another student mentioned that she wasn't, she wasn't bad, she was, she was bad. And circles, Mr. A was able to push her towards being her best person, so now she has a 3.4 at Lincoln High School. So with all this said, Mr. A and Mr. Niablas, Niablas, I don't know how to pronounce it, we're gonna start incorporating circles more next semester to an actual thing at Lincoln, so it helps us with the Knox kids and with the Lincoln kids come together as like one to open ourselves up as a community. Thank you.
Hey, we wanted to share some pictures of this work with our students and our families on the screen behind you, and Santiago's gonna play a little bit of music during that time.
Thank you, Knox Middle School. Board members, and yeah, Dr. Whitehurst Payne, yes.
I would love to say thank you also, and for those of you who didn't understand, this group of students from Knox last year spoke to the university, San Diego State University, USD. They came to our cluster meeting and made a presentation. They've done this work on a weekly basis with their campus, so now you hear about them moving on to Lincoln and doing the same thing there, working with them. So I'm very optimistic about this and congratulate all of them on all of their hard work.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Whitehurst Payne. Okay, well, that was very powerful. Thank you again to Knox. We will now move on to item C2, and this is our proclamation recognizing Patrick Ambrosio.
I'd like to move item C2.
Thank you, Vice President Viser. And we've got a second, which, two seconds, all right. Patrick, if you're here, could you please come forward? Yes. And I don't think we have any speakers, but we would certainly like to honor you, Patrick, for your service on our Audit and Finance Committee. You've done great work for our district, and we very much appreciate that. And board members, please vote on the recognition. Okay, great, thanks. And should we all go take a picture with Patrick?
Sure. Did you want to say a couple of words real quick?
Okay. I just wanna say what an honor it is to work once again with the entire school board and actually also to get to see that Cindy Martin, as a superintendent, takes the time to show up to meetings everywhere, including the Audit and Finance Committee. But I, special thanks out to board members that I got to serve with, board member Kevin Viser, Dr. Sharon, Dr. Mike, thank you for your years of support. But on staff, I also wanna say that they did an excellent job, because it's amazing to see somebody like Ms. Melissa Hudson, who's done so much to keep that group consistently on par. And then, of course, Dan McCallister being the supervisor that has been the chairman of our group. But as vice chairman, I'm glad to have served my two years and pass baton on to another wonderful community leader. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Patrick.
Thank you again, Patrick.
Okay, we will move to item C3, and this is the support for our military-connected students in recognition of the service liaison officers. Superintendent?
Thank you. Jennifer Cornell is going to join me up here, and this item is exactly what you just said in the introduction, with over 13,000 military students in San Diego Unified, the work that we do to support our military families, and the essential work of our support liaison officers. We want to talk about that today, about what that looks like and how this district's commitment is not just in our words and feelings, but in our actions of what we're doing to support our military students that live within our district boundaries, largest military student population in the country in a public school system. So Jennifer, thank you for being here tonight to present this.
Thank you for that opening. Good evening, everyone. Like the superintendent just mentioned, I'm Jennifer Cornell, the program manager with the Office of Children and Youth in Transition. And tonight, I'm honored and excited to share with you the supports that San Diego Unified has established for our military-connected students and families. Tonight, I'll be highlighting two very important things, how we're supporting and promoting civic engagement, and some of the resources, events, and programs that we've put in place to meet the unique needs of our military population. Before I begin, I want to highlight how central this work is to the success of our schools. San Diego Unified has approximately 13,000 military-connected students each year. That's the largest population of any district in California. Additionally, our military-connected students transition from school to school an average of nine times during their K-12 years, nine times. And because of this, San Diego Unified is committed to ensuring the students and families of our brave warriors who sacrifice for us on a daily basis are provided with the best public education possible in environments that are welcoming and sensitive to the concerns of our military families. So without further ado, oh, I'm in charge here, I'm sorry. So without further ado, one of our main objectives as a community of schools is to make the city we serve a better place to live for everyone. And this is why we teach civics and promote strong student leadership programs, one of which is JROTC. Projected on the screen, Master Sergeant Ferdinand Toledo of Scripps Ranch High School, of the School Air Force JROTC, highlights his commitment to civic education in his quote on the projector. And because of his dedication and skill, Master Sergeant Toledo was selected as the 2017 Air Force JROTC Outstanding Instructor of the Year by the Department of the Air Force Education and Training Command. And that actually makes him the top enlisted Air Force JROTC instructor in the entire program, which is huge. We're also celebrating the fact that the Scripps Ranch Air Force JROTC unit won this year's National Academic Bowl Championship, making them number one in the world. The unit has also been awarded the Air Force JROTC Distinguished Unit with Merit Award for six consecutive years, so a big congratulations to him and to Scripps Ranch High School. Our second objective is meeting the unique needs of our military population, and it's supported through resources, events, and programs for military students and families, because their success is central to our success as a district. One such event was a True Blue Buddies Bike Giveaway that our police force held for students at Dewey Elementary School yesterday, if any of you were able to see it on the news. Many of those families are military-connected. Additionally, as a small gesture of gratitude to those military members stationed in San Diego, who will be away from their families this holiday season, San Diego Unified is launching its first annual military card drive, starting on Monday, started on Monday, and will run through noon on Friday, December 15. And as a special thank you to those first 100 people who drop off cards tomorrow, they'll be presented with free tickets to the San Diego Symphony's Holiday Concert at Copley Hall.
All right.
Yeah, very exciting. In addition to these events, we demonstrate our commitment to military families every day through the resources we make available at our school sites. Some of these resources are projected for you tonight, and include welcoming new families to the neighborhood schools, offering services that help match them with similar education programs that they were previously enrolled in, as well as introductions to local military liaison officers that help with issues or resources that they may need. Additionally, district schools have military-friendly environments with programs, teachers, and counselors trained to aid in the transition and adaptation of their incoming and outgoing military families. These supports begin when families arrive in San Diego each summer with our Military Appreciation and Enrollment Fair. This year's event is tentatively scheduled for August 11th from 9:00 to 1:00. We have the flyer up here from last summer's event that was very successful, with over 1,000 people attending. And this is a chance for us to offer families to enroll at their school site, to browse through resources and speak with representatives from different district departments, to receive free immunizations, backpacks, school supplies, and a barbecue lunch, and to meet with our superintendent, board members, military dignitaries, and our principals. At this event, and year-round, we promote our military student enrollment options for families new to San Diego. These options enable families to select school sites based on their temporary or permanent housing assignments, and aim to maximize school stability and decrease the number of school transition students make. Also, I'd like to highlight tonight that in support of Senate Bill 455, San Diego Unified has established remote enrollment for any military student moving into our district. And we've put procedures in place for Assembly Bill 365, which extends military-connected students certain rights regarding exemptions from local graduation requirements and acceptance of partial credits, which are currently afforded to other groups of highly mobile students. In supporting our students academically, San Diego Unified has been the recipient of several competitive Department of Defense Educational Activity Grants. The Department of Children and Youth in Transition currently facilitates The Department of Children and Youth in Transition currently facilitates the implementation of all three active grants awarded to the district, the first being Operation Learn and Thrive, which serves over 2,200 military-dependent students at Chesterton, Angier, Miller, Hancock, and Mason, and focuses on nutrition, education, and achievement in language arts. Operation Aim High is a second grant and services approximately 1,800 military-dependent students at Sarah, Farb, Deportola, Vista Grande, and Miller, focusing on project lead-the-way STEM implementation, avid and social-emotional supports for our students. And our third active grant is Operation Special Education Achievement, which serves approximately 750 military-dependent students, the majority with special needs, at Vista Grande, Kumii, Miramar Ranch, Perry, and Tirasana, and supports art integration, universal design for learning, and balanced literacy. An additional site support for 17 of our highly impacted school sites is a military and family life program, the MFLACs. These counselors are funded by the Department of Defense, and they assist students and families with topics ranging from relationships, crisis intervention, stress management, grief, occupational hazards, and other challenges military families face, and they're a welcome addition to all of those 17 school sites. They're very appreciated. This evening, I'm also pleased to announce for the first time in front of the board and an audience that San Diego Unified has recently received a $1.2 million grant from the Department of Defense. This will be our fourth active military grant. It will support college and career readiness for our military-dependent students at Miramar Ranch, Perry, Cabrillo, Taft, and Sarah. We're working on our planning year, and next year will be our first implementation year. And the Kaiser Foundation was awarded, has awarded our district a $20,000 grant to support emotional well-being through coping skills and stress management, and this project will be piloted second semester of this year at Hancock, Miller, Angier, Farb, Taft, and Deportola.
Congratulations.
Thank you, very much. And lastly, this is the most exciting piece of the night, lastly, but certainly not least, the commitment and connection to our military families would not be possible without our partners in this endeavor, our military school liaison officers, who are sitting right over here, and I'm going to ask them to come up in just a second. These ladies are based out of our local military installations and work side-by-side with San Diego Unified, helping us ensure that the unique needs of this population are met. These ladies, also referred to as SLOWs, collaborate with us, and they really do fiercely advocate for our military students to have the best public education possible. I would now like to recognize their hard work and San Diego Unified's continued commitment to our military partnership by asking our school liaison officers to join me in the front, to present them with a token of our appreciation. We've got Stacy Benston, Carol Bevel, and Kelly Frisch with our Marine Corps, Carol Burton, Kristy Terry, Jackie Kahina, Patty Khalil, and Kelly May, our Navy liaisons, and Jen Canol, our Coast Guard liaison. All of them aren't able to be here tonight, but those of you who are...
Keep on coming with your shorts, though. Thank you. Oh, wait a minute. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. Board members, any questions or comments? Yes, Dr. McCrory.
Yeah, I just want to thank Jennifer and thank the liaisons for the excellent work that they're doing, great presentation. I've attended a number of events. I was at the Military Appreciation Enrollment to see the families arrive, and it makes it so much easier, think, go to one place in order to get everything settled beginning of the year. I also want to acknowledge the event that I saw televised today about the surprise at Dewey, which was an incredible surprise. Two children at Dewey saw their mother for the first time in six months, and she was returning from a Navy deployment, and it was just such a thrill to see that. And I know it takes collaboration, coordination, and the work that you do not only at Dewey but across the district to make things happen, to make our families fit in, and thank you so much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any final comments, Superintendent? No? Great, thank you again. Yeah, sorry.
I just want to really appreciate you for your work and for all the folks at the Department of Defense that I've worked with over the years, really making a big difference, especially those grants. Thank you for getting those for the kids. Thank you.
Okay, terrific, thank you. And thank you to our SLOWs. Absolutely. Okay, we'll move now to non-agenda public testimony. Today's meeting of the Board of Education is a business meeting of the board that is conducted in public, and board members will not engage in a dialogue with members of the audience. The opportunities for members of the public to provide input to the board on non-agenda matters and items on the agenda is through the submission of a timely public testimony request. The time periods for speakers on each item are set by the board as described in our bylaws and will be announced to members of the public as each agenda item comes up for a discussion. Testimony on non-agenda items is limited to a maximum of 15 minutes per topic. Public testimony speakers are limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker, and depending on the total number of speaker requests received, the time may be reduced to two or one minute each. If an issue needs further attention, the board may refer the matter to the superintendent for review and/or investigation. Today, each non-agenda speaker will have two minutes to address the board. Please remember, no deferral of time is allowed. We ask that speakers focus their comments on the issues and not on individuals. Non-agenda public testimony is for only those topics not on today's agenda. If your topic is on the agenda, you will be called on to speak when we get to that subject matter item. When you begin speaking, the green light will come on, a yellow light when you have one minute left, and when your time is up, the red light will appear and a bell will ring. The lights are located directly in front of the podium, on the dais next to Ms. Ward, our Board Action Officer. Please finish your sentence when your time is up. We will now hear public testimony on non-agenda items. It looks like we had four people sign up, Citizen, Francine Maxwell, Jackson Stevens, and Letitia Mungia. Please come forward.
So in 2013, the superintendent was aware of a law that said that employees do not report child abuse to principals or to school police. That was in 2013, and here we are in 2017. And finally, the district attorney of San Diego County, Summer Stephan, comes out on the news, and she says publicly that you're going to do it right. When you're a mandated reporter, you're going to do it right, and you're not going to report to the school police, and you do not have to report to the principal. And specifically, she said, "I don't want to see anybody circling the wagons," which is what I've seen. When a little child claims that, a little child states that they've been abused by an educator or somebody else, everybody goes into this mode of, "Let's protect the school district." I've seen it time and time and time again, specifically the rape that happened at Lincoln High School and didn't get reported to the San Diego Police Department for two days, for two days. So the superintendent knew this in 2013 and dragged her feet and dragged her feet about getting the policy right. Finally, I saw it pop up. It was put on the website October 1st, 2017, and the policy is pretty much written correctly. It says, "A mandated reporter shall not be required to disclose his or her identity to his or her supervisor, the principal, or the superintendent or designee." That's the law. So nobody's above the law. The problem is, what is the practice going to be? Are students going to be believed? Are employees going to follow the law? Or are employees going to be intimidated by principals to report to them? I just dealt with this at Gerald Beck. I've got a complaint that's cranking through your system right now of a principal that exactly said that to the employee, said to the teacher, "You come to my office because I want to talk to you about it." It's a complaint, you guys have it. And the last thing, illegal fees. Still doing it, illegal. And here's a man that wrote to you guys and said, "Come on, man, this is ridiculous. Why not make Eaton pay us back? Of course I don't have a receipt. Send me $42." This man had to buy supplies for his child at the schools, which he didn't have to do. And the school district took advantage of them, exploited these children. Does it all the time, makes kids buy all kinds of stuff for school that the school district's supposed to pay for. So all you had to do was give this man his $42 back because you didn't give that student a calculator. Instead, you kept it. $42, that's what you guys are about. You took this man's $42. The California Department of Education said, "Pay it back," and you guys made them jump through hoops, and he couldn't get through it, and you kept his money. You are not above the law.
Good evening. Hi, thanks to the board members and community members in attendance. My name is Jackson Henry Stevens. I'm here today to talk about a few things. One, first of all, I'm a custodian in the district for the last seven years, my first appearance at a board meeting, and I'll make it brief, talking about the seniority violation that took place in June 2017. I'll go on to a little point about the timeline of finding a solution, and then lastly, add that I'd like to open up a dialogue between board members and any district personnel to find a solution in a timely manner. So basically, what it was is 60-something custodians were brought in to pick a new assignment based on layoffs, based on cuts, and then assignment combinations, which I was bumped into, two four-hour sites with increased workload, and in my particular case, lessened working conditions. The ongoing effort has been to find a solution to right this wrong. Like I said, I have seven years, but on the books, I had two, which caused me to pick near last, and has resulted in, you know, very undesirable working conditions, as I mentioned. So just to go forward, you know, kind of spinning of the wheels, I spoke with the HR Director interim a few times, to no avail. Some of my supporters in the union have advocated on my behalf without success, and ultimately, I had kind of lost optimism for finding a solution from the district or for anyone within Custodial Department. Fast forward to November of this year, I was informed by the board, I'm sorry, by the union, that there was a solution. The district had agreed to the terms of redrafting everybody and righting the wrong. I was surprised, but I was also encouraged that now the seniority would be appropriate, and everyone would have an assignment according to their date. So fast forward two weeks, this was last week, I was called again by the union interim president informing me that the district, in fact, had pulled that offer off the table. So here we are, six months later, without solution, and without genuinely any hope for some kind of reconciliation between Custodial Department and then the actual janitors who have been impacted. So in final, thanks for hearing me out, thanks for everybody for attending, and I hope to encourage some kind of dialogue between the board of finding a solution in a timely manner and stopping this before it continues. I'm here on behalf of, as you can see, no other custodians in attendance, just because we usually work evenings. So I felt it necessary to come face-to-face and kind of bring this issue to light. Thanks.
Good evening, board members and superintendent. My name is Letitia Mungia with the California School Employees Association. I'm very thankful that Jackson took the time to come here and share what the experience has been amongst the OSS bargaining unit, and also to provide a very quick overview of the horrible conditions that our employees have had to deal with as it relates to this seniority bid that was breached. On or about July 1, the union was provided notice that the district intended to reshuffle custodians with the layoffs that occurred and the reductions that occurred as well. We are now in our sixth month of waiting. As of yesterday was the last mediation meeting with the State Mediation Services, and the district HR department withdrew their proposal a week ago, which Jackson is correct. We had made huge efforts in trying to resolve this. Jackson was very kind in not sharing the dramatic impact it's had on his family, on his studies. He's a student at San Diego State and has to commute in excess of 28 miles in one direction from a site that he was given. So to me, the economic hardship that our workers have been, are facing because of a decision that was made by a new director, not understanding the conditions on the ground, has had an impact to our schools and our students, and we ask for immediate intervention. We've attempted to use the grievance mechanism in place to ensure that the district understood the harm. We're talking about our school sites where our custodians are nestled, invested with our students and our parents, and they were ripped apart and given a new assignment July 1, with no consideration to their seniority and how vested they were in their communities. This needs to be fixed, and we're here on behalf of CSCA to make sure that our members' rights are respected as we wrap up the year before the holidays. It's absolutely critical that somebody pays attention to what's happening on the ground. The second issue that I speak to you about is, we were notified on behalf of CSCA that the school district decided to bill parents for transportation at the most critical time of the holidays. We received word that someone within the management structure decided to bill our low-income parents for busing, and that they actually made a decision from a fiscal impact perspective that our parents are now being asked and are being forced to collection. Not sure that you're aware of that. Our parents are being sent to collection. We have a list of 250 impacted parents who received threats from collection agencies for transportation that they are dutifully required to have as students in our public education. So I wanted to highlight that as we get ready to go in and celebrate the holiday season, somebody who's already, our parents who are already facing economic hardship, that they are now being threatened by collectors about bus transportation to ensure that their kids get an education. We need your attention to the situation. Thank you.
8,335 unexcused absences jumped to 10,487 unexcused absences at Lincoln when you board sent your only employee over to Lincoln without a conscience. I'm asking you, as you begin your holiday season and the things that you treasure, that you think about District E and the lack of leadership that you've shown since you wrote into her evaluation that she's to go over to Lincoln. She's a truth avoider, she's a truth dodger. 10,487. I spoke to over 150 Latino parents, and they can't get anyone to answer the phone. They can't get anyone to visit their homes so that you can find out why their students aren't coming to Lincoln. I sat in a room, Room 601, last week, and heard the math department chair tell me how he has lowered the bar. There is no reason to be high-performing, high-achieving when you teach at Lincoln because no one is holding you accountable. The bar is in the gutter. He's teaching children that it's okay to turn in work late. The science department head shared how the bar is in the gutter. They encourage children, "Don't worry about it. If you want to be a plumber, you can take your tools to that plumbing job later. You don't have to show up on time to work to be a plumber," let alone the children that are going to college and a research paper that has to be turned in on time. that are going to college and a research paper that has to be turned in on time. Lincoln staff has decided that they get too much pushback when they demand excellence. So, let's see. You sent over your employee that doesn't have a conscience. She has yet to motivate the people that are on boots-on-the-ground at Lincoln with no conscience, and they've lowered the bar to the gutter. Children walk up to me every day and say, "Why, Ms. Maxwell? Why? I get 17 chances to do that quiz. In what other school is that allowed?" North of Aida is not allowed to do that, but once again, you have shackled us. And yes, I'm using the word shackled as we end this year. Please consider what you're doing to District E. A math teacher shared that children from Knox Middle School does not know what half of 20 is. I celebrate children every day with restorative practices, but when Johnny can't add 2 plus 2, there's a problem, and there's a major cover-up going on. And every board trustee, as you go into drinking your eggnog and you bring in the New Year, you think about all the children in District E that don't get to celebrate. Don't come back from Tijuana because, I met with them, a lot of them are not going to come back from Tijuana because, for what? They are not getting what they deserve when it comes to our schools in District E, and it is time for you to grow a conscience, maybe this holiday season, because the gutter is alive and well at Lincoln High School, and department heads, they weren't afraid to say it. They weren't afraid to share because there's no accountability in this district.
That, this completes the non-agenda public testimony for this portion of the meeting. If we did not get to you in the first 30 minutes, we will also hear non-agenda public testimony at the end of the meeting. Thank you for your comments and for taking time to address the board and superintendent today. We appreciate your input, and please know that your perspectives help us to better serve our students, parents, and the community. Okay, let's move on to Item E1. Ms. Donovan, do we have any reportable actions from closed session?
No.
Okay. We have no administrative assignments. Let's move to our student body president's report. Tonight, we have Jenna O'Taula, our ASP president from Scripps Ranch High School. Jenna, do you want to tell us what's happening at Scripps Ranch?
Yes.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Jenna O'Taula, and I attend Scripps Ranch High School, and I'm the ASP president. At Scripps Ranch High School, it is a very academic school that works to prepare students to be very successful in college, and over half of our school has over a 3.0 GPA. 1,740 students have above a 3.0. 1,127 students have above a 3.5, and 263 students have above a 4.0. We have had an increase in students taking AP honors, CCT, and college classes. There are 751 students taking AP courses this year, and many of those students are taking multiple AP courses. Scripps Ranch High School also has strong pathways for child development, engineering, and business. We have many school activities that are run by ASP in order to get students more spirited and involved in our school. Our homecoming dance this year had 1,140 students in attendance, which is more than half of our school. Scripps has partnered with Rachel's Challenge in hopes, in hopes to promote respect and kindness to all students. This is a partnership where the goal is to make, make all schools safer and eliminate bullying and replace violence with kindness. We also receive support from the butterfly effect that encourages the spirit of giving to the less fortunate. Our band has traveled to Huntington Beach for the California State Band Championships, and they earned second place in their division. Then, they advanced to the championship finals where they competed against the top 12 schools in the state. Like Jennifer was saying, our ROTC program is amazing with the instructor, Master Sergeant Toledo, receiving the Instructor of the Year Award, which is given to only two instructors in the United, in the entire United States. Under his leadership, our program has won both the ROTC Academic Bowl and the overall National Academic Bowl for the past two school years. This program is consistently placing graduating cadets into one of the three military service academies, as well as awards for ROTC scholarships. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thanks, Jenna. Great reporting. Yep. And of course, Diego Robles from Kearney High School and the president of the Council of ASP Presidents. Diego, what's going on at Kearney?
Hi. Thank you for having me. So, first off, I'm going to start with the ASP Council. So, within this month, we have pushed for a new logo for, for our council, and I have it right here. So, we tried to make it so that it would unify all the schools, and so, yeah, this is something we've been working on, and we're very proud of.
I noticed Kearney's on the top.
Yeah. That was, yes.
Very present.
So, we have that logo, and so, last week, we had our annual student congress, and so this year, we changed it up a little bit, and we divided it into two sections, where the first section was all about discussing the issues that are happening in our schools, and the second section was more about networking and all the different ASP members from different schools to kind of get to know each other. So, the topics that we chose for this year were violence and school spirit, and so, our emcee was Mr. G. C. And so, I think it was really, really successful, and we had many schools in attendance. And the wonderful thing is that we chose topics that are very broad so that they would relate to all of the schools. So, when we started talking about violence, they took different forms in different schools, and they were able to be heard. And also, school spirit, that was the most popular when we chose the topics in our council, just because we are always looking for ways to get our students motivated and distract them from all the stress and some negative things that might be going on. So, our council meeting for this month is tomorrow, so we're taking all this data, and next, tomorrow's meeting will be, that's what it is, the whole, that's what the whole meeting is about, is just discussing those issues and the responses of the students to push some actual, like, hard things to bring to our schools. So, I'm very excited about tomorrow. And so, the second portion, it was the networking and bonding, and we did a bunch of games. And by the way, Claremont hosted, and so, they were really, really awesome. We did really a lot of activities and games, and we made it so that everyone got to interact with each other. And I don't know if you remember, but the first meeting that I was here, I talked a little bit about my goals for this council, and one of them was connecting the ASPs together and really making sure those students know each other and get to talk about the different activities they do at their school. So, that was kind of like our first step, and it was very successful, so I'm very excited about that.
Right.
So, yeah, it was really awesome. And now, for our Kearney High School ASP, we're working for our winter dance, which will take place the 19th of January, and we are still working on this, but we're hoping to have the Met High School come to our dance, so, and atypical just because they don't get that opportunity of a bigger dance. So, really hoping that gets through so they get to come and hang out with us. And so, it will take place at the Marina Village, and the name is Comet's Wonderland. And yeah, we're very excited, and we're also going through our winter week this week. Today was pajama day, but obviously, I had to change. So, yeah, just having fun. And then, as for academics, our, most of our seniors, I think over 90%, early grad, so, a lot of our seniors at the School of College Connections are having a field trip to SeaWorld this week, SeaWorld this week because of their outstanding S-PAC scores. And if we look at the other school, our Digital Media and Design, they're, they're working at their, they're working for their senior defenses. So, they're, it's their presentation reflecting the four years of their, the four years of the school. And so, all of our seniors, we're going crazy a little bit just because we have our finals for our college classes, and a lot of them are early gradings, so they're getting everything ready to take full-time load at Mesa College.
Wow.
Thank you.
Wow. That's fantastic. Thank you, Diego and Jenna. Yeah, great reports. Okay, Superintendent Martin, your information report.
Oh, thank you. First, I just want to say thank you to our Office of Secondary Schools and Children and Youth in Transition for the great presentation tonight about our military families. I just think there's no greater honor than to serve those who serve our country, and to hear a little bit more about that tonight was really fabulous of all of the different connections and touchpoints that we have within the district and with our community partners in that area. And I just want to say another plug for the letter-writing campaign for, to send holiday cards to our military families that are overseas. We're going to be accepting those cards in the lobby here through Friday at noon, and as you heard, the first 100 get the symphony ticket, so we hope that that will become a San Diego Unified tradition. So, if you're listening or watching, we hope more cards will come in, and families can hear from folks here, right, right here in San Diego. In addition to the moment of silence that our board president started this meeting about with recognizing Daryl Leges, I also want to recognize another district employee, some sad news, a gentleman named Ken Ritchie, who, I'm not sure how many people know or remember him. He worked here quite a number of years ago, but he was the backbone of music education in our district for literally decades, and he served students in this district well into his 80s. He didn't know what retirement meant, and he just passed away at the age of 97. I know many, many people in the district know him and his legacy for music education, and I wanted folks to know that Ken Ritchie's memorial service is going to be held at the First Baptist Church of Claremont on Saturday, December 16th at 10:00 a.m. And so often, we talk about visual and performing arts and the ability for the arts to transform lives, and Ken Ritchie literally transformed thousands of lives for San Diego students through the years, and we're very grateful for him. So, folks that knew him, it's a time to honor him. So, and also, I'd like to recognize tonight being the first night of Hanukkah, so some people might be lighting their candles tonight as we go into the holiday season. I wish everybody happy holidays for whatever holiday they celebrate. The season of light begins tonight with Hanukkah and Christmas and Kwanzaa, and Happy New Year to all who are celebrating, and as we move into this holiday season, I wish the best to everybody in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. Okay, board information reports. Dr. McCrory, do you have a report?
Sure. Thank you. So, I attended a number of district-wide events and activities, as well as events that took me into eight different clusters. I just want to highlight a few of those. So, in terms of district-wide, the, I met with our civics learning partnership with Justice Cayetti and Justice Judith McConnell, where we're working with attorneys and judges and administrators and across the county to invigorate civics education in, in our schools. Also, did a ride-along with our police force, as our San Diego Police Force, and toured activities in three different, three different clusters. In terms of cluster events that I want to highlight, I was at Kate Sessions IB Program Review, which is sort of a WASC for our elementary school, which is International Baccalaureate School, and I also did a, a report of the state of the school, state of the district at our PB Kiwanis Club. In, in the Kearney Cluster, I was at Linda Library, Linda Vista Library 75th Year Celebration, and then at the, was able to go to an event in Point Loma where we had the Ocean Beach Gathering regarding demonstration opposing short-term vacation rentals in La Jolla. I was at a La Jolla Cluster meeting, and then Claremont, went to a town council holiday party at Lincoln. Today, I was at SeaWorld, and, and the Knox Middle School students were there, learning about what, what life could look like if you focus on marine biology and, and oceanography. In the San Diego Cluster, I was at Perkins to do the unveiling of a piece of artwork there. It was incredible. And then, I also, I was at the, I visited the San Diego Co-op School there in, in, in Mountain View. Excellent. So, I had a great, great week, a great couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. McCrory. Dr. Evans? Yep. Vice President Visor?
Yeah, just a couple of things real quick. I just want to thank everybody at Rich's San Diego and Fernando Buendia Jr. and Patrick Ambrosio with the Rainbow Lions Club, and everybody that came out the other night for the Ninth Annual We Care, which is basically a LGBT fundraiser for Fay Elementary School students. They raised over $9,000 to make their holiday better and collected hundreds and hundreds of toys on the December 10th. So, thank you very much to everybody that participated in that. Also, I wanted to, you know, once a teacher, always a teacher. Today is the first day of Hanukkah, December 12th through the 20th. It's an eight-day celebration. It's a Jewish holiday commemorating the rededication of the Holy Temple, which is the second temple in Jerusalem at the time of the Maccabean Revolt against the Siloquid Empire. It falls on the 25th day of this month in the Hebrew calendar, kind of like how Christmas falls on the 25th day in December for the Gregorian calendar. It's also known as the Festival of Lights or the Festival of Dedication, and that's why there's a menorah with nine branches or candles, and it's celebrated with one of my favorite, latkes, which are really just a deep-fried little potato pancake. So, you know, I just want to take this time also to say thank you to all the teachers at all the schools across the district that work so hard to help educate our kids, that have different standards and systems, different, different ways of helping children to learn. And I really want to appreciate all our paraeducators and classified employees also that work tirelessly every day, and I know sometimes they get railed on down here by people, but we know that, that, you know, so many people have dedicated their lives to our children. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Visor. Dr. Whitehurst Payne?
Thank you for this opportunity to share. I'd like to just report that at Crawford, I visited them at the cluster meetings a couple of times last week, and then this week, they're planning for their LCAP workshops, and they're coming together, they're recognizing that they need to bring everybody in, even the parents who are here, not only those from other countries, but the parents who are here. So, their concerns are being expressed and shared among the group, and they're, they're working for a solution to that problem. The Lincoln Cluster, we had our cluster meeting last night, and as a special guest, we had the president from City College there, and we're planning for a meeting at their, on their campus in February. So, they're going to send buses and all of that to pick people up, and we're looking forward to that. Lincoln Cluster last night had a wonderful little small groups with the schools. Each school reported to the parents there, so we kind of broke out into small groups, and that was a nice activity for those who were there. I, I know that there are problems in the cluster, and Superintendent and I talk about them all the time, but it's on a continuum. You have wonderful things happening, like with the Terrell Davis event last week. I think he became a Hall of Famer or something like that. Guys saw that.
Something like that.
Something like that, yes. And so, we've got the whole spectrum where students are trying to get into college, and we're trying to meet those needs, and I encourage everyone, regardless of where you are in the system, to really take the next couple of weeks and get some rest, and then come back prepared to really work hard to meet the needs of all of our children because that's important. You need time for yourself, but then we also have some obligations and responsibilities to our children. And Morris is having this cluster meeting tomorrow, and so, we'll be attending that, and I want to thank you all for all of your support of our schools.
Thank you, Dr. Whitehurst Payne. Just real briefly, I got to attend the McKinley Elementary Student Production of Peter Pan, and it was spectacular. It was, the McKinley community continues to just, I think, amaze people with the amount of parent participation. I mean, there were hundreds of people there, and people were very active, and the kids were, were incredible. And I just want to also mention, I know that our seniors like Jenna and Diego, you're right kind of in the middle of your college application process, right? You've applied to some, you might have a few left to go. So, it's, it's a tense but exciting time, I know, for, for all of you. I want to mention that Maya Salome from San Diego High School, who is our nationally-recognized student poet and also is one of our student equity ambassadors, got early admission to Stanford, and she just heard that earlier this week. So, terrific kid, and does San Diego Unified proud. So, good. Why don't we move on to our, can we get a motion for Items G1 through 4 on our board?
So moved.
Do we have a speaker? I'm sorry, we've got a speaker on Item G4. Jeff, Jeffrey Bennett? Yep.
And I also understand G3 was withdrawn?
G3 was withdrawn.
Okay.
Yep. Go ahead, Jeff. You want to speak to Item G4?
Yes. Thank you all for your time. G4 is on the adoption of Gordon, Board Governance Policies. I encourage you guys to look into a few things on, on this specifically, perhaps revision, and if you guys approve it, because you guys need to approve it, maybe consider putting it back on the agenda in a couple of months after you've looked at some of these areas. The first is under BSR4 with the authority of the superintendent. For folks who don't know, we have a very strong superintendent policy and a good division between the board and the superintendent. The board directs the superintendent. The Board directs the Superintendent on a vision, and then it's left to the Superintendent to implement that vision. However, item 4 indicates that the Board will respect and support any reasonable interpretation of the established policy by the Superintendent, even if the Superintendent's decisions may not be the decisions of the Board or individual members. While I think it is important that you support the person that you put in that staff, I also think that there needs to be an element where there is revision or guidance provided if the interpretation that's being presented isn't there. And I'm not saying by any means that our Superintendent is deviating from that, but I think that there's a good policy for good back-and-forth communication to improve accountability on that. And then, if you look into the Superintendent Evaluation, SR5, number 4, she's evaluated on the reasonable interpretation of the LCAP, but then also reasonable process towards LCAP goals. Well, the LCAP is huge, so I think there's an amount of vagueness there, that you're, that's making it hard to evaluate in a way that's incremental in your January and June evaluations. I would recommend that you have the Superintendent present a plan with specific areas of looking for improvement, as well as maintaining current levels, and then have that plan presented in front of the community too, so if there's things that the community feels should be addressed, that those things can be, and then that can be looked at for that next evaluation period. I think that type of thing would allow for more accountability and clearer guidance for the Superintendent on what the priorities are at the time. It's similar to what we do with our classroom teachers on a yearly basis, where they focus on specific areas to improve in their classroom, while trying to maintain all the other areas. So, I think that's kind of in line with other things. So, I'd encourage you to give your Superintendent more tools to succeed by that. Then also, on GC5, Board Committees. The LCAP is a really important process, but currently, most of the, the point, and I'm actually, Board Member Whitehurst Payne was talking about involving more individuals in the community through the cluster meetings, and I'm glad that that's happening in there. But, a lot of times, it's solicited from the school site councils, district advisory councils, cluster councils. And I think a committee on community engagement that could partner with FACE might improve that in another extent. So, I just wanted you guys to consider those things.
Thank you. Thanks for those suggestions, Jeffrey. Yeah. Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the items G1 through G4. If no further comments, please vote. Okay. All right, we'll move now to our item H1, and this is our semi-annual report from the District Advisory Committee for Compensatory Education. And I think Susie Reed, our Doc Chair, will present the report. Hey, Susie.
Howdy. I just need to plug in.
Okay.
I apologize.
Okay.
Well, it might die, and that's okay. Well, eventually, we'll have a support.
Oop. Make sure you don't fall off.
Oh, well, logistics, right? Yeah. Thank you, Stacy. I don't think it's going to work. All right, good evening, Boards, Trustees.
Your laptop going to fall off the podium?
Yeah, it's good. It's good. It's good. I know. It would be nice if it fell off, and I had an excuse to get a new one.
There you go.
Because my battery is not working. So, happy December. I hope you all are well. I appreciate the time to come in and talk to you all. I'm Susie. Nope, forward. There we go. Okay, so, just a little recap. A lot, obviously, we've only had a couple of opportunities to meet as the DAC, September, October, and November. We meet again tomorrow night, but it's a little more of a truncated report, I guess, as opposed to the one I give you in June. In June, we did discuss some different attendance ideas, and just, we confirmed too, that we need to, it needs to be more, less of an act on the DAC to try to get more people involved, and more on the part of the principals, and more on the part of the area superintendents to encourage the principals to send more people to DAC. So, it was nice to get confirmation on that. I, just because of all the changes and all the retirements, the fact that we had, you know, almost 1,300 people retire, and we had people within our financial planning and monitoring and accountability office that left and retired, and we got a new director, and a lot of changes. So, I see that reflecting in how our engagement has been so far this year. So, only 50, we set a due date of a roster due date, October 2nd, somewhere in there, in the beginning of October, which is a little sooner than previous years, but we've been trying to get people to have their elections sooner, and engage their parents a little bit sooner. But only 55 rosters out of 178 schools, I'm sorry, 176 schools were turned in by the due date, so that is telling. We do have some areas of increased attendance. I know Area 2 increased their attendance, as well as Area 4, so we are following the trends in where we're seeing increases and where we're not. But pretty much, the trends are pretty consistent across the board. It seems like it's more of a site-specific issue, rather than a area issue. There's no real, I mean, looking at trends, we see that. And unfortunately, because of the fact that we did not get all the rosters turned in in October, we did not have quorum. So, it's kind of hard to do business when you don't have quorum, as I'm sure most people know, running boards is difficult if you can't actually vote on things. So, that was a disappointment. We have a funky quorum, because it's 25% of our total school population versus the 50% plus 1. So, we were struggling to even get 25% of 178 schools, 176 schools represented. So, it seems a lot of schools are not conducting September meetings, and I know that per bylaws, it doesn't necessarily state specifically that you have to have a certain number of meetings, but you need to have a number of meetings to be able to get business done. Well, obviously, schools not having meetings in September are not getting business done. And I would argue that, I would love to say it's mandatory, but obviously, we can't do that, but highly recommended. So, we, oops, pardon me. We have established in the LCAP that the meetings are part, and having a well-established SSC is part of the, we can see that parents are engaged based on that. And so, we have a school site council handbook that we give to principals every year. We had a lot of new principals this year, which may have also accounted for some of the decrease in engagement and decrease in attendance. But, just a couple of things there from our school site council handbook. It has all the due dates in it, so principals are given that, but it's all a matter of whether they not, whether or not they get enough time to read it. And like I said, it really kind of points more to a school site-level thing versus an area-wide thing. So, I know everybody's been working on trying to get more people involved, and our director, Tom Liberto, and our liaison, Mary Johnson, have been really, as well as Dario Gutierrez, our other resource teacher, have been really talking with principals a lot, trying to get everybody to turn in their rosters. I think at this point, we still are missing 35 schools' rosters, so, and I think it's a lot of new principals, so it just means that they are not necessarily maybe getting guidance on some of those new things. But also, I think one of the challenges there is administrator workload, and I'm not going to be the first to tell you that that's an issue this year. I know that a lot of people have been up here telling you that that's an issue. Human resources, obviously, if we can't fill positions, we can't get people to help do things. I know one principal said, "It's hard enough to get the DNF lists out, and now I have to do these other things that my vice principal, when I had another one, was taking care of." So, it's, the workload is, it looks like we're seeing that reflect on engagement. And just some things we've heard from some of our SSC representatives, technology issues, and a lot of people use the DAC to come and give us a little idea of what challenges they're facing as a school site, and it's one of the few forums that they have to do that, and know that we can get that back to you all. So, technology and special education are also other areas of concern. And we all have pretty much the same issues across the board, I think, that these tend to be the four that everyone is seeing more consistently. So, I know that that's going to change, hopefully, over time, when I give you our update in June, then we'll have a little better idea of how that will, how that impact has affected us as a group. It's kind of hard to give advice or be an advisory body when we don't have enough representation from some of those schools. And it's historically been the schools with the highest poverty. So, we've got a list, a little document that's been put together of reasons why it's important to send a rep to the DAC, and also, why it's important to send a rep in September. And so, that is going to, we're going to look at putting that into the SSC handbook, and look at putting that in front of principals sooner rather than later, as well as in front of our DAC reps. Let's see, this year, we've got a few things that we're looking at, just reviewing our bylaws. At one point, it was decided that schools that did not receive Title I funding should not vote on Title I-related matters. But when it comes down to it, the central budget, which uses Title I dollars, actually affects the entire district. So, schools that have Title I students at them should also get a say on how centrally-funded Title I dollars are used, or centrally utilized. So, we're looking at that, and we're going to get feedback from the DAC on that. We also have our Title I recommendation, so that'll be coming to you in January, but I can tell you that it's going to be a lot like last year. And also, we'd like to get some feedback from you, if you are not happy, or if you know ahead of time that it's not really going to fit in with your idea as far as budget and things, because I know last year, you did not go with our advice to change the decrement for the ranking order. So, I think that it would be helpful to have feedback on why that decision was not taken, or why that advice was not taken. And also, I know the budget thing was a big part of it last year, but I'm looking forward to this year, and I see the budget thing might be another issue. So, we're trying to increase equity across the board, we're trying to make sure that there's more dollars for schools to utilize. So, in order to do that, we're trying to change the decrement to make it a little more even across the board. And I know that's going to see some decreases in some areas, but some increases in others. And because we're talking about Title I students, who happen to be at every single school in our district, just maybe not one that happens to be over 40% meal-eligible, we still want to make sure that those students are getting, are getting either central funding, or they're getting funding through perhaps the school that they're going to be going to next year, if it's more of a Title I school. So, Title I ranking, we're still waiting. I got a copy of it tonight, so we'll see how that, how the changes in the demographics. I know we didn't mail out the meal-eligibility forms this year, we actually handed them out, so we made some changes from last year. So, we're hoping to see, some of the schools that decreased, we're hoping to see that that might have been a snafu, or something that, an unintended consequence. I am not sure how I'm doing on time, but I'm trying to power through. The budget, of course, coming up, we've got the potential, a big deficit again, so we're, our DAC and SSCs are looking at that, because that does impact the school. The total amount of money each school received last year for students decreased. We saw, and so, the SSC sees all of this. They know our budget, they know the site's budget far more than any of the other stakeholders in the schools. And so, we start our conversation about budgets in October, talking about Title I, talking about how things fit in to the regular budget. But there was a talk of a budget survey coming out, I know, I was told it's going to be coming out in January, and I was asked to give some advice on how that budget survey might have been handled or done. And my, essentially, I had emailed the CBO, Mr. Odinger, the needs list, the school's needs list, that was compiled two years ago by our former chair, Amy Redding. She basically asked every single school site, and she gave each and every one of you binders. Sorry, Ms. Whitehurst Payne, I don't know if you were here with us at that time, so you might not have received one of those giant binders. But that had a needs list for every single school site in this district, and so, I don't think that that's changed very much. If anything, I'm sure it's increased a little bit, but that is your basic needs list for most of those schools. So, I think that work's already been done. I think I encourage the Board, and I encourage you, Cindy, to look at those site needs lists again, because I can tell you, if you go back and survey those schools, they're probably not going to tell you anything really that different. Because those needs are based on what the SSC sees, and we sit in those meetings, we see the budget, we see what we have, we see what we don't have, we see what we need, we look at the SPSAs, we see where our test scores are, we see where our kids who need improvement are. So, your SSCs are basically your best source for anything budgetary. So, I encourage, I encourage the Board, I encourage you, Cindy, to engage the SSCs a little bit more. I mean, they've been doing the hard work. I mean, I've sat on an SAC for eight years, and I think that there's a lot of knowledge there that you can tap into. So, if you're going to survey, maybe not the whole district, because you're going to get a crazy list of all kinds of things. Toilet paper, I mean, I'm just trying to think of pencils, pens, and things like that, that aren't necessarily what your SSCs are going to tell you. They're going to say, "We need an English-language support teacher. We need someone who can stay after school and do tutoring." I mean, those are those basic needs that the SSC is going to have and be able to give you. So, and it's a little scary heading into another deficit year, but I do, I do want to tell you that we all take this very seriously, and we all come in, and we all go to our SSC meetings, and we do that extra DAC meeting, because we want to make sure the kids are getting what they need, and especially, the kids who are poor, our low-income students are getting what they need, because that's the whole point of this, right? Now, the whole point of Title I funding. So, it's, we're all passionate about it, and I, Mr. Bennett back there, my soon-to-be-first vice chair, hopefully tomorrow night after election. But we all are there to make sure that it's, that we're talking equity, and we're talking about what the kids need, and how to increase academic improvement, academic achievement. So, I can assure you that we all have the kids' best interests in mind, and we're going to talk serious budget stuff. And that is the end of my slideshow.
Great. Thanks, thanks, Susie. Board members, any questions or comments? Yeah, Dr. Whitehurst Payne?
You talked about not being able to get a quorum. We talked last year about having some satellites.
Yes, and unfortunately, trying to figure out the logistics of getting Facebook Live, or trying to get any sort of FaceTime or satellite thing, we may not, because most often, you have to be present to vote on things. It would be great to do that for informational purposes. We could videotape, but there's really no way for us to have an engaging conversation with people via remote. And it's, the Ballard Center, I think, I'm not sure what year it was built, but I'm not sure if it's going to, if it's tech-savvy enough to pull that off, and it might cost a lot more in the long run to be able to do that. So, it's something we discussed, but not really realistic.
Well, your meetings are at what time in the afternoon, evening?
They're at 6:30 in the evening.
Just thinking about the logistics of traffic nowadays.
I know. If we can coordinate shuttles, that would be awesome. It's, and we're never going to be able to please everybody on where we put the meeting. And I've had a lot of people say, "Please don't move it, I just figured out where the Ballard Center is."
I know, we've been working in the Lincoln Cluster, in getting people, first of all, identified.
Excellent.
And then, several of the schools, they've been coming to our cluster meetings.
Excellent.
And there's an element of excitement about that, and I just want to figure out a way to get people there, because if you don't have a quorum, you can't make a decision.
Right.
And, you know, this whole thing of voting with technology, maybe Qualcomm, or somebody who has technology and they do it all the time, can help us to facilitate something like that, because it's important.
I would welcome any, anyone who knows more than I know about that subject, because I don't, I don't know very much about that. But if you could set up a satellite link and beam us into different schools, that would be very, that would be very neat, but a little above my pay grade.
Other questions or comments? Dr. McCrory?
Well, I want to thank you for taking on the responsibility of being a chair for the DAC. Tough work, and it's important work. I'm concerned about the rosters, the attendance, and then what that means for meaningful and active engagement. And I'm wondering, in terms, can we, can we have an SSC without a roster?
No. I mean, you can, yes.
Is it a matter of creating the roster? Is it a matter of having a valid SSC? Or is it a matter of just getting the roster to you?
It's a matter, well, the principals have to first make sure they have enough representatives. And oftentimes, it's harder for them to get parent representatives, and so then, the SSC would be out of parity. You need to have so many staff and so many parents. And so, that tends to be a challenge. And I think as far as the due date, it's really a matter of getting the work done, and having, having parent engagement in September, back-to-school night, say, "Hey, we're, you know, getting people voted in for our SSC." It's a matter of making sure there's enough time for a democratic election, because it has to be democratically elected representatives. And so, as long as the roster's in by the due date, then any one of the parents, any one of the people on that roster can show up to the DAC meeting and have a vote. But it is a matter of making sure it gets into that office, and that it can be verified by the staff.
Did I understand you correctly, that you have, there are 35 of the, of the 176 schools have not yet submitted a roster?
Yes, not yet. And a lot of that, it looks like it might be some schools with newer principals, so perhaps they just are overwhelmed and not able to get it in. But then again, some of the schools, maybe schools that have chronic tendencies, we have some schools that haven't turned, didn't turn in their rosters until January last year. And in order to have, in order to have the budget conversation, and to be constantly looking at your SPSA to make sure that you're meeting your goals, and you can change it if you're not meeting your goals, there needs to be a conversation, there needs to be an active SSC. That's why it was put on, in the LCAP as one of the metrics to, for parent engagement.
So, that's the correction, is to, is to put it in the LCAP, so it becomes a measured item?
That would be nice. And we do, I think we do have it in as rosters, rosters turned in. So, last year, I believe it was only 21-point-something percent of rosters were turned in on time. So, that was the measurement. I'm really hoping we can improve on that for this year.
And then, if I wanna see if I heard you correctly, you said that areas two and four have had an increased participation?
Yes, yes. And I'm not sure, like I said, and the trends don't seem to say whether or not it's the actions of the area superintendents, or whether it's been the work of the department, but it looks like there is some increase in those areas. And I'm gonna look a little more closely after tomorrow's meeting and see, because the November meeting, we had a shoot-up in attendance, which was nice, but still was, we literally just made quorum. Like, it's 44-point-something percent, and I think we just had 44, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just a couple of things. Superintendent, did you wanna talk a little bit about sort of what efforts are underway to help schools get functioning SSCs up and active?
Yeah, we have, Tom Liberto and Debbie Foster are here, and they can talk about what they've been doing. I think Susie alluded to it a little bit, but it is a priority for us, and how we're able to give schools the supports, and trying to determine whether a school is not doing it just because it's a new principal, or there's something else going on with the community. So, I don't know if Debbie or Tom, Debbie can speak for Tom?
Yes, thank you very much, Superintendent. And thank you to Susie for all the work. We're really excited this year to have Tom Liberto. We're taking advantage of his status as former principal, and working with colleagues to see exactly what the issue is. In most cases, it's just a matter of bringing in the people and understanding the importance. So, we're looking a few different ways. We heard from principals about, "What does this mean to my school?" And so, as Susie mentioned, she and Tom put together a list of the benefits to attending and being part of that. And we're already getting lots of questions and interest, and just based on that, that roster number of 30 has dropped significantly. So, I think people just realizing the value of that work and that partnership. We know that tomorrow night and January are gonna be high attendance, because they're talking about Title I funds, and everyone wants to give their input on that piece. So, we know it's just gonna go up from here, so, great work. And you mentioned engaging new parents, reaching out to our parent at Gage, Jeff, who's in the audience. We have some people who are turning over in their roles, and bringing in new parents, and it's very, very exciting to see the commitment by parents like Jeff, so thank you, Jeff. So, lots of great work.
It's hard work, but it's good. Maybe we should put Title I on all of the agendas. It's like clickbait, right?
Thank you, thank you. And so, Susie, you'd ask just for, you know, maybe a little input as you're going into the discussion about Title I rankings. And I'll just speak for myself. The consistent issue that I've had is any redistribution of Title I funds away from the highest-poverty schools. And so, any, you know, change in the rankings that results in high-poverty schools losing resources, I'm gonna have issues with.
Oh, I hear ya.
Yeah, right.
I hear ya, yeah.
And to piggyback that, it's not just schools with high poverty, it's high concentrations of poverty. You know, there may be a large school that has 800 children on poverty, but that could only represent 50%.
Yeah, I appreciate that, yeah.
But there's a lot of, there's some research and data that's come out recently that says that, you know, when, when we have concentrations of 95% poverty, or 100% poverty, that there are bigger hurdles there to help those children reach equity and get to grade level and learn.
Absolutely. And then, we actually, by law, can't say, "We're gonna give you less Title I money because you get money from other sources."
Against the plan.
So, it, I know it's a challenge, and it definitely makes everybody kinda cringe thinking about taking money away from higher-poverty schools. But looking at some of the carryover, some of the stuff that gets left on the table, it's gotten a lot less these days. But we still, we look at that as well. And really, what it comes down to is making sure that there's a little more equity across the board. And I know that, that wiggle room and that change is awkward, and I always say that it's not fun to say, "Yes, we need to take money away from the school to be able to ensure that these schools might have a little bit more to work with." But it really, when it comes down to it, it really is those few dollars. I mean, if we're only giving one school $5,000 in Title I money, or I think it's like, what, 40? The lowest is like $32 per student. So, when we ask those principals, "How are you, what are you doing with those, that money?", they say, "Well, it's kind of ridiculous. I'm not sure exactly what to do with that money." So, you don't know if that is actually providing any sort of, you know, real resources, or any sort of real, anything that's gonna give you any sort of change. So, I mean, it's a nasty conversation. It's not something that anybody wants to discuss, but it's a matter of looking at the district as a whole, and looking at where our kids are. And people always say, "Title I money doesn't follow the child," and that's always something that's challenging. But looking at LCFF dollars, that's not the case. It follows the child. So, that's, that's another kind of thing for, for us to look at as well.
And I'll just add, the DAC has been so open to understanding the changes with No Child Left Behind to ESSA, and how equal isn't equity.
All right.
And so, there's, there's a big difference there, in just understanding and complying, so.
Absolutely.
We've had great discussions about that.
Lots of laws, yes.
All right. Thanks again, Susie. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Susie.
Okay, can we get a motion on item H2, our appointments slash reappointment?
So moved.
Representatives to the Audit and Finance Committee. We've got a motion in a second. Any comments? If not, please vote. Okay, thank you. And I see our chairman here with us tonight, Chairman McAllister. Hello? Yeah. Okay, item H3.
So, I'll move H3.
Yes, and do we have a second?
Second.
And do we have any questions or comments on item H3?
I'm gonna say, so, if you're under.
Got it, yep, thank you. Okay. Okay, if not, please vote. Great. Item H4, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, and we do have one speaker, citizen?
So, a lot of new policies. One of them is the F1 visas, which will now be accepted, bringing in foreign exchange students. That was stopped in 1979. And when you're bringing in a teenager, these teenagers are going to go live in homes in this, in this, in this community. And these people do not have criminal background checks. They do not have fingerprint background checks. F1 students will have to pay tuition. So, what I think is that this is about money. It's not about students. And it's not about cultural exchange. It's about money. Another issue I've always had with the exchange students that have come in on the J1 visa, is that they're never allowed to participate in high school graduation. And they're so disappointed when they show up here, and they want to experience our culture and all the different experiences, and they can't participate in graduation. Other districts do allow that, and they do welcome the children. And they're giving away, they're giving up a year of their lives with their families. So, it is a district policy, and principals could give this to teenagers this experience, and they should do so. And the school-affiliated groups will now have to report how much money was raised in a fundraiser, and how it was spent. And it should also include a limit on fundraisers, because people are tired of nonstop requests for money. And they should be open and transparent, and post their financial reports. Saturday school, the policy states that the law for Saturday school attendance shall be voluntary, but the policy's not stating that you can't use Saturday school for discipline or detention. It is on a little form, and parents are supposed to sign when the students are going to go to Saturday school. But that's not happening. It's still being used as a punishment. And the education for ELLs finally has a waiver, and there is a notation that there should be a deference to the parents' preferences. That's very important. But the waiver must be clear that parents can also refuse ELL services. Students have been improperly classified, and their parents are run in a horrible system trying to get their parents, their students out of it when they don't need those services. And the parents know. The parents will take services if they feel their child needs it. They shouldn't be forced to take it, because they can't get out of the bureaucracy. And then, the private travel agencies, they've had a monopoly in San Diego, profiting from soliciting customers in our school during instructional days by teachers. And how are you going to ensure that that's not happening? We're losing instructional time so that these companies can recruit their customers. How is the district going to ensure that these companies are not exploiting students? They're doing it now, and they're using instructional time to do it. And this is a really odd policy, not sure why it's there. It was eliminated many, many years ago, and now it's back. I question that.
Okay, Letitia Mungea.
Good evening, Letitia Mungea, field director with the California School Employees Association on behalf of the three bargaining units represented here at San Diego Unified. Good evening, board members, and Superintendent Martin. The item before you causes us concern, based on the timing, and also based on the imposed furlough days that have impacted our employees and the two bargaining units. For example, we received notice on or about November the 17th at 4:23 PM, right before the Thanksgiving holiday break, which in fact, did not provide sufficient notice for us to thoroughly review all the changes that are incorporated in this item. If you note, right under the recommendation, it indicates that you are looking to implement on January the 3rd. Again, our folks will be on furlough starting next week, right? And so, the idea that the Department of Labor Relations gave us, quite frankly, five business days to review all of the incorporated intent behind this agenda item causes us great concern. Additionally, they have raised concerns that they have lack of availability to be at the bargaining table. So, for this, this item to actually be fully vetted, and to really allow for three bargaining tables to really meet and negotiate any potential impacts, it goes to the concern that we have been raising at the bargaining table, which is lack of meaningful, good-faith negotiations in an effort to reach common interests for, for the employees, our members, and the school district community. We're asking that you pull the item and/or delay its implementation, as you've indicated on this item. Again, it's January the 3rd. Folks are still actually on furlough on those days. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mungea. Can I ask the superintendent, are there issues in terms of timing, and either delaying the, either pulling the item tonight or delaying implementation?
Well, I'm interested, are we talking about pulling the whole item and all of the policies that are coming forward, or was there one specific one?
What I'm hearing, and I could be incorrect, is that CSCA is expressing a desire to be able to review the policies to determine if there are any impacts that they believe require bargaining, and so, yeah.
I'm gonna ask our director, executive director of Labor Relations to come up and speak, but while she's coming, our policies say that this is conversion process for these existing policies. This is the third set. We've been working on the conversion to align to the CSBA policies numbering that started in 2015, the first set of converted policies and regulations you all approved in December of 2016. The second set, you approved in July of 2017. Tonight's item includes the third set of converted board policies, administrative regulations, and exhibits submitted for approval. And so, the process that we're going through is going over a year-long process, and we're doing in batches with notification as they go along. This process includes in-depth staff review of existing policy procedure, comparison of the CSBA sample document, recommendation, and then we look at the CSBA language compared to our language, then it goes through district's legal team to conduct a review of staff's recommendation for the language, and then the final documents are approved. So, that's the process. This is the third batch, and we're approximately halfway through the conversion process, and it's being coordinated through my office. So, that's the, that's the process of this set coming through tonight. It's not the first, and it won't be the last, and I think you might have some more input.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent. The notice that we sent to all of the bargaining units, it went to all seven, included in there was just the indication that if they had any concerns, wanted to discuss any issues, that they just needed to notify my office by this Friday, December 14th, and then the implementation would be stayed pending any discussions. So, that is built right into the board item also. It was in the letter that was sent to each one of the bargaining units. If they notified that, and we've done that in the past, if there is an issue, we had notified that we would delay implementation to discuss any issues. We haven't received anything that I'm aware of to date from any of the bargaining units about wanting to address the issues, but that was something that was built in, and that's the same process that we've been using in the past and would use in the future. So, if the bargaining units want to just, I can understand tonight, they've kind of indicated that, if they just wanna send something in, we can delay these implementation, and then we'll schedule meetings to talk.
And what's your deadline again? That's this Friday, did you say?
Right, we had given them, so, when we sent the notice out before Thanksgiving break in November, all that was required was not to review before today, but to notify Labor Relations Department that they'd like to speak about them.
Got it.
And have a meeting. So, there was no indication in the letter that they had to do all of the review while they're on break.
Right.
It's just that, notice that this was gonna be on the board meeting for tonight's meeting, with a scheduled implementation in January. And if there was any desire to discuss, if you just notified us by this Friday before we went on winter break, everything would be stopped, and then we would schedule meetings after winter break to be able to do that.
Okay. Okay, great. So, we have a motion in a second. Any further comments or questions, Vice President, Advisor?
Yeah, I mean, you know, to just make sure that we're doing due diligence, you know, is there a problem with delaying it instead of implementing January 3rd, implementing maybe February, the first week of February, to allow the CSCA and other folks the opportunity to review and see if there's anything of concern that we need to discuss?
If we need to delay implementation to February 1st, we can do that.
Okay. Any, the maker of the motion, want a friendly amendment?
That's mine.
Okay. As the... Okay, the amendment is to delay implementation to February 1st, and is the, who made the second?
Zach.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
What if we were to delay implementation as to those policies or procedures that were identified as being ones that were desired to be discussed? Because there's quite a bit of information in there, and there are quite a few policies and administrative regulations that I know that staff is anxious to get working on. And so, I would think if there was no concern by our labor organizations, then those could go forward and be implemented on January with the remainder in February.
Would, would you have enough time to go through this massive document before January 3rd?
I would say our folks are on furlough anyway.
Right, so, that might be an opportunity. Okay, I understand. Yeah, so why don't we stick with the amended motion, and did this second? Who seconded? And you're okay with the amended motion? Okay. Any further discussion? If not, please vote. Okay, item H5, can we get a motion? Is there scheduled meetings?
I'd like to move the item with one exception, that we try to do workarounds and not have board meetings on election days, when we need to encourage people to be out voting.
Okay, we have a motion from Vice President, Advisor, to accept the recommendation with Okay, we have a motion from Vice President, Advisor, to accept the recommendation with an amendment that we work around to attempt not to have board meetings on election day. Is there a second to Mr. Advisor's motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Do we have any discussion on that item?
Yeah, I think it's really important that we're really trying to embark upon civics and helping our children in public schools to understand the value of democracy. Looks like there's, you know, an election that's where we have, now have a Senator Roy Moore in Alabama with 60% of the votes in, and he has 53% of those votes. And I think that a part of the civics education in public, in public schools is the cornerstone of democracy. And making sure that we have an informed and educated electorate is part of our, you know, part of our mission. And so I think that it's really important that we exemplify that by not having school board meetings on election days and election nights. And staff needs to be able to have that ability to go out and vote, or maybe volunteer and help other people to vote. And so that's why I've, I've hoped that we can, we've done it before, and I hope we can do it again.
So I second it, order to have the discussion. And I'm, those, there are two dates that would be affected. I understand it would be the June, maybe June, Tuesday, June the 5th, and it would be Tuesday, November the 6th. Those are charter meeting sessions, and I'm wondering, what, is there a negative impact there? Is there, wait, is there, any adjust?
Well, in my opinion, in the past, what we've done is we've taken those agenda items and either brought them out a little earlier or the next Tuesday. And typically, the charter agenda meetings are, tended to be relatively short. In the past, when we did this in 2014, it worked quite well, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Because they avoid graduations except...
We did in almost every case, we have one conflict, but much better this year than in the past.
Okay. I mean, my comment would be, first of all, I would prefer to vote with the schedule as recommended without the suggestion by Vice President, Advisor on a workaround for elections. I don't believe there's anything about having a school board meeting on election day that inhibits people's ability to participate in an election. I think there's ample opportunities for people to vote, whether it's on that day or whether it's prior to that day. And what I worry about actually is it sends a negative signal in the, in the opposite direction that, that we're going to delay the business that we have been elected to be responsible for because, because it's elections that may affect ourselves personally. So I don't think that's the right message to be spending, to be sending. I also believe that there are issues that come about, particularly with the June meeting, that have to do with the timing of our adoption of our final budget and our final LCAP, that I would worry we could potentially compromise if we don't have an election on the first Tuesday of June. So I disagree with the motion for those reasons.
Well, I think you raise a really good point about making sure that we don't delay. And in the past, what we did is we actually considered those items the week before. So we didn't delay. We actually took care of the business of our, of our office the week before.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Well, I would, I can see both ways, but I would say in previous years when there's been an election, when it was an election in which I was participating, it was not a big deal to have the, the board meeting on the same day.
Okay. So why don't we vote on Mr. Advisor's motion? All, or just please vote? Okay, Mr. Advisor's motion passes. Okay, let's move on to item H6. Can we get a motion on item H6, our annual readoption of our board bylaws?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, please vote. Okay, item H7 we'll have at the end of the meeting. So we'll move on to item I-1, which is our external auditor annual financial statements for our fiscal year 2016-17. And we have our Chair of our Audit and Finance Committee, Mr. McAllister. Thank you for being here as usual, and thank you for your service.
A pleasure. Good evening, members of the board. I come before you tonight to present the audit and findings of the auditor this year. I'm pleased to present the Audit and Committee response to the district, report on audit and financial statements, and supplementary information, including reports on compliance for fiscal year 2016 through 17. It's interesting that this audit has improved every year for the last six years on a consistent basis. That's very good, I think. The Audit and Finance Committee was asked to review the external audit report conducted by Crowe Horwath for 2016-17. The committee commends the district finance staff for receiving an unmodified opinion from the external auditors, which is the best opinion a school district can receive for its audit. So congratulations to you all, as well as the staff. I think that works very hard and very diligently to make these things possible. Between January and December of this, this month, the committee met six different times and were provided with periodic progress reports on the external and internal audits. Of the three prior year findings, two have been fully addressed and solutions implemented. And the remaining item was carried over to this past audit report. The external audit report for 2016-17 discussed three findings, one of which is recurring. I think we all know ASB accounts seem to have a recurring nature to them for good and, well, different kinds of outcomes. But the committee continues to express concern with the number of findings in the ASB accounts. However, it is pleased with the response to these findings by the district's financial division staff. The district controller's office has been, I think, very diligent in implementing multiple training classes over the past couple of years, and updated resource materials for school staff and students are being added to the district's webpage for easy reference. It is the expectation, though, of the committee, as it has been consistently for a number of years now, that with continued training and staff support, the managers, employees, and student representatives will continue to show improvement when taking on their responsibilities. I think one thing that we all need to understand is that students are mobile, and they don't stay in one place for a long time. In fact, the goal is to graduate them from school and move on. But this money that comes in every year is really the responsibility and combined responsibility, not only of the supervisors, but of the students themselves. So I think the district staff, as well as your bank, have been expressed, expressed interest in trying to help train the students to better understand their fiscal responsibilities in this whole process as well. They do have a voice, and they should have a voice. On Wednesday, November 29th, 2017, the committee unanimously agreed to recommend that your board accept and approve the independent auditor's report for 2016-17, and we concur with the recommendations contained in the audit findings. I think it's also good to say that your audit firm has taken extra steps to ferret out things that need to be looked at, and by signing two auditors to conduct each audit, that's different than we have had in the past. That's a good, a good situation. And additionally, they schedule ongoing roundtable sessions to ensure that they are reviewing all relevant areas of the district that should fall under the purview of audits. So I commend this to you and recommend approval of it and adoption of it. And with us tonight are, you've already talked to this award-winning young man here, our auditor.
Thank you. I have to admit, I've had quite a bit of anxiety about this presentation. First, I have to follow Mr. McAllister, but also to take this audit report and to still it down into a one-hour presentation is a little, I'm, I'm just kidding. Just a couple moments.
He is the most popular auditor.
Yeah, right. I made the tax collector more popular than the auditor, so. And I really just want to take a couple minutes of your time, because the audit does have some very valuable information in it. The first thing I wanted to mention is that it brings credibility. It brings credibility to your financial systems and the financial information that the board gets throughout the year and that you use to make decisions on for the school district. It brings credibility to state compliance, where, and you can see in the report, there's a number of different state compliance areas that we look at on an annual basis. And it also brings credibility to your federal awards and the testing of those federal awards for compliance. And I'm very pleased to, to tell you that we did have unmodified opinions in relation to your financial statements and your compliance. There were a couple of items that we noted in the back of the report where there were some, some areas where we can improve a little bit, but I think you can see the magnitude of those on, on the scale of, of your district overall are very minor. They're required to be included in the report, and they're important to pay attention to, but they are minor when you look at the district overall. I also wanted to report to you that we had no audit adjustments. We did not even accumulate any un-made adjustments to the financial statements. So we didn't require anything be made, and we also didn't find any smaller errors that we would accumulate and bring to your attention. Again, that speaks very highly to the credibility of the financial information that you're getting throughout the year and that's contained in this audit report. It's the exact same information that was contained in the audited actuals that you've already reviewed and approved previously. Last thing I'd like to say is just to echo Dan's comments in relation to the work of the staff. The audit is an ongoing process. We do work on the audit throughout the entire year. And there are two main things that come as a result of that, I think are very important. Number one is, we don't just work with the finance staff. We go out to the sites, we visit with the folks in charge of ASB, we do testing in relation to a number of compliance areas, including the taking of average daily attendance. And there's a lot of hard work being done throughout the district by staff in order to be able to achieve the results, the good results that you see here in the audit report. The other is, is, does relate directly to your finance team. And again, I just wanted to commend the finance team. I mentioned the audit is a year-round process, and one of the reasons why we don't have audit adjustments or significant deficiencies or material weaknesses is because your team takes the time to try and get it right the first time. When things come up, when there are new transactions, when things are occurring within the district, they will call us and ask and solicit for our advice real time to ensure that the reporting for those transactions, the reporting from those activities is correct the first time in the financial statements. So with that, I would welcome any questions that you have, and I thank you for your time to, to highlight some of the audit.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, Vice President, Advisor?
So, real quick, Mr. McAllister, you'd mentioned that this is, that we received the highest rating unqualified. In, in education terms, that's like an A-plus, right?
It's an A-plus.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Dr. Reiter's opinion.
As a member of the committee, I too want to commend, first of all, our Chair, our illustrious Chair, and Patrick, and the auditors, and staff, because you do come, you bring us information, and we get real in the meetings. We let you know how we feel about things. And I commend the auditors for working with us on a real-time basis rather than waiting till the end and then saying, "Got you." But if there's a problem, we can go to you and say, "How do we do this?" And work through it throughout. And thank you, Mr. Alan McAllister, for your service to us, and we want to keep you on board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. McCory.
Yeah, I also want to commend the, the committee and Dan McAllister and auditing firm for outstanding work. This is kind of like our second opinion. We hear from our staff about where we are and how healthy we are and what we're doing and, and what we're doing correctly and how we can make adjustments. And then we have our, our outside auditors and then the internal audit process that keeps us on track. So this is, this is truly a good news report, and it's not a unique report. It's some, it's a report that we've been receiving year after year after year that speaks to the, the soundness of our fiscal health of this district, and especially soundness under very trying times, with $124 million shortfall and, and looking for solutions there. The fact that we could get a unmodified opinion and get an outstanding report and with, with no audit adjustments, I think is, is incredible work, and it's verified, validated by your auditing process, and it's a commendation to the staff and Superintendent for the work that you've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McCory. Any other comments? No, I, I obviously reiterate the thanks to Dan for your service over many years and to everybody who participates in the Audit and Finance Committee and Crowe Horwath for your approach of, of working with us. And I just want to thank and congratulate Superintendent Martin and Debbie Foster and our entire staff for, for your excellent work. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Okay, and I think we have, no, do we have a motion yet? A motion to accept the?
I'm going to do the second.
Item I-1?
Second.
Okay, and a fight for second. All right, please vote. Okay, and we're on to item I-2, which is our external auditor financial and performance audit reports for props S and Z. Superintendent?
Are you coming to present this one?
Yes, okay, great, thank you.
It's a thick document for a reason.
Yes.
Thank you. And again, I'll just take a couple moments of your time. As you all are aware, the law requires that you provide to your citizens oversight committee a financial statement audit of the bonds as well as a performance audit of the bonds. And we've had the opportunity to work with your oversight committee throughout the year. We work with them in advance of doing the work to ensure that the procedures we're doing are still meaningful to the community and to the roles that they serve. We meet with them throughout the process, and then ultimately, at the end of the process, to go through the document in draft format to ensure that if they have any modification or changes, that they'd have an opportunity to make that. I'm very pleased to tell you, as a result of all of that work, that we have an unmodified opinion on the bond financial statements, and then we have an unmodified opinion on the performance audit as well. So both of those documents have been submitted to you and are available for presentation to the citizens oversight committee.
Fantastic. Comments or?
I'll just, thank you for that report, and thank you to Lee Dolgeroff and that team. The Prop S and Z capital bond program received the highest opinion auditors can offer for both its financial and performance audits, as you said, and as it says in the document as well, for the ninth consecutive year, the district's capital bond programs received highest opinion. For the fourth consecutive year, the auditors made no adverse findings, a significant achievement for a bond program of this size and complexity. Great work by the whole team.
Absolutely. Now, do we have a motion to accept this?
So moved.
And a second. Any further questions or comments?
Just a...
Yeah, Dr. McCory and, yeah, Vice President, Advisor.
Okay, I apologize. I just, you know, with regard to the bond program, I believe it was just a few board meetings ago that we received an update that due to our fiscal stewardship, our bond rating increased dramatically, and that's going to save taxpayers in San Diego, I believe the number was $170 million over the life of the bonds. And that's $170 million that we could put back into improving our facilities for our kids.
Great. Dr. McCory.
I'll call attention to a couple of pages. We get into this page 37 and 38 and page 1. There are some important outcomes here. In terms of looking at the overall performance, the concluding statement is that if, that our S and Z bonds, our process has met the objectives. I think that's critical, that's critical to note. We are, and on page 37, it talks about internal controls, and it says that during our audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal controls and how we're handling the expenditures of these funds. And then on page 38, it talks about that our... that the results of our tests disclosed no instances of, of noncompliance or other matters that would require to be reported. So it's really, it is a clean audit, and it speaks well to the program and the people handling the program and to Lee Dolgeroff and his office and our financial team. So, thank you. Congratulations.
And I would again completely agree, and thank you to the auditing firm and to the ICOC for your work. You know, when we go to the voters like we did for Prop S in 2008, and then again for Prop Z in 2012, and we ask voters to approve our bond measures, we're asking taxpayers in, in our district to make a financial sacrifice to support our students and our schools, and they've done so, and it's right for them to expect that we're going to manage our money well and that we're going to do the work that we said that we were going to do. And it's becoming a broken record that, you know, every year, we're getting not only a clean audit, but now, you know, four consecutive years.
clean audit, but now, you know, four consecutive years, you know, a performance audit which absolutely, which has no findings and which, you know, states clearly that we are carrying out the work that we made a promise to the voters and to the taxpayers to carry out. And it's incredibly important that we continue to do so because when we ask people to invest in our schools, they have a right to expect the highest of results, and that's what we're delivering. And so again, thank you Superintendent Martin, and thank you, Lee, and thank you to our entire team for another year of outstanding work. And with that, please vote. All right. Thanks again, guys. Okay, Superintendent's, oh, I'm sorry, we almost skipped item I-4, which is our first interim financial report. So Superintendent, you want to kick us off? We've got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Superintendent.
Thank you, President Barrera. This is our first interim financial report. As you know, we're required to present each year, and I want to begin this item by thanking our extraordinary financial team and the work that they've put into preparing this report for this evening. They've worked long and hard to actually make this report a reality tonight. Some of the headlines you may have seen today have already been reported by the media. For example, the fact that we're hoping to be certified positive for the first time in eight years. None of this would have been possible without the effort of our entire school community. For that, we're very proud and grateful. This first interim budget update that you're going to hear tonight is built on local control, listening to parents, protecting classrooms for reductions, and on accountability. His tie is playing a song in case you didn't know.
I accidentally bumped my tie. I'm sorry.
It's the preamble to the first interim.
Sorry, my students loved it today, by the way. And it flashes, too. Anyway, I'm sorry.
So, as a district, we're determined to put our schools on firm fiscal financial footing for now and well into the future. We want to be accountable to our community, and so everyone understands the value that comes from with an education from San Diego Unified. And with this first interim report, we can talk about where we are and the great progress that we've made for strong fiscal stability for now into the future. And with that, I have our CBO, Mr. Ottinger, to present the first interim report.
Thank you, Superintendent Martin, members of the board, members of the community, We're honored to be here presenting this first interim, and we thought it was a perfect coupling with the continued strong audit reports and findings because this is really, those are, for the most part, looking back, and this is our chance to look forward. So, thank you for this opportunity. Briefly, an overview of our important timelines as our entire system works to make sure that we, as an auditor, would look for, we're hitting our timelines. A couple to call attention to would be, as we lead up to the governor's budget and the district's budget adoption in June, we want to highlight the proposed budget in January from the governor, but then also the revision in May. As we're looking at the current year, this is an important place to reflect as we project for out-years. And this graphic really shows currently where do our dollars go this year, because understanding where our dollars are going now will help us understand the projections that we're going to review in the next slide. As we prepare each year, here are the assumptions we used in building out our multi-year projections. As you can see, these items are requiring us to prioritize every year, as we always do. But with that, as we move through the presentation, as we think about these projected numbers, we're going to walk through more detail on the different reprioritizations needed to balance our budget moving forward. So as we start to tell this story, we've prepared this graphic, which speaks to the financial climate, speaks to our budget being 1.3 billion, it speaks to what we're expecting or what we're hoping in terms of what's possible to reach full and adequate funding. We're looking at the $59 million that it would take to be status quo, and so we'll be looking at that closely as we prepare for making the adjustments necessary as the governor rolls out the budget or the first look in January. So the thermometer showing these, also showing the ongoing operational costs that truly are increasing much faster than the revenue. And the increasing costs needed just to keep status quo within the system exactly where we are now while our operational costs go up. This, laid along side, other factors like declining enrollment, continue to tell our This graph shows, as has been reported across the state, a year-over-year downward trend with both enrollment, but also the average daily attendance. A lot of folks don't quite realize, so we're helping everybody understand, as the board has stated, attendance matters, and we are not funded by how many children enroll in our schools. We are funded from the state based on how many children choose to be part of our incredible learning environment that we create for our students each day. So as you can see, there's a negative impact on revenue, again, laid aside with the increased operational costs. So as we also know, the state funding shifts year-over-year, and we have a very brief slide just to indicate where we've been and where we're going. There's a lot of discussion about the LCFF full funding and the gap that still remains. So we wanted to highlight where we are in terms of a gap that still exists to get us to a fully funded LCFF, and many statewide are very hopeful that the governor, with some possibly rosy projections, will go ahead and fund that entire gap. And so that's what those numbers, that's what those numbers mean there. Now, looking at this gap, and then looking at our ongoing dollars, is where we need to take a look at our operational costs. So the next few elements, we're going to walk through some of the details of our ongoing increasing operational costs. Amongst other things contributing to these costs, step and column raises that are honored each and every year, contributions to programs, utility costs that are constantly increasing and are out of our control, along with healthcare premiums that we all know are rising. We also wanted to depict the projected and mandated increases to the pension contributions for both PERS and STIRS, which we all know and has been pretty well documented, not just by the UT editorial board, but also a recent study out of Stanford. These are impacts upon our system, but also other government agencies across the state of California, which really leads us to, these operational costs lead us to our shortfall for the upcoming year. And we have highlighted the shortfall, not a deficit, this is our shortfall that we need to close to have a balanced budget, and we have a path to do that. We have a staff recommendation on a path to do that. These rows and columns here are more detailed regarding the operational expenses we've been discussing. As a system, as a community, invested in our students, we will, we will balance this budget. And we've already started the conversations, starting in the fall, continuing through the winter, about the feedback process as we all prepare as a community for the 18-19 school year. Some of those highlights. I want to pull out the incredible work done by our school communities, and there's some echoes of that earlier in Suzy's presentation about what it really means to sit down as a site governance and a school site council team to provide that input as a, as a community around the school about what we need. And we, I can share on behalf of our district team, the feedback that we received from those SGT and SSCs, incredible, detailed, sharing with us what they want, what they're visioning for, what they're hoping for, but also very real and candid about the things that, that really may not need to be part of the ongoing, the ongoing LCAP, and then also new things that they really want to see added. And the feedback was, was and is incredible, and is, quite frankly, going to be quite informative as we look to make reductions as part of our tiered system for reductions, which I'm going to speak to next. Along with our ongoing solutions that have been identified in years past, including the spending freeze, hiring freeze, our priority is to minimize direct cuts to sites. And we know, pending the governor's budget, we hope to achieve this goal of completely minimizing the direct reductions to school sites. However, we're fairly clear in December that Bucket 1, which is central office cuts, central office reorganization and reductions, we expect that will be necessary. We will know more throughout the year, certainly they may revise, and we are planning for scenarios along the way. By mid to late January, we expect to know if we can prepare to pull back on scenarios in Bucket 2, which would be centralized services, which we know impacts sites. Those would be services that are from the central office, funded from the central office, but directly support school sites, and we understand that those are absolutely essential. So, as I said, as we get more information through the year, we're hoping that's where we're going to be able to pull back in terms of that bucket, too. So our strategy is to really direct those impacts to the degree possible away from school sites. And these tiered solutions are also designed with the knowledge that shifts may occur. For example, some of the shifts may occur, we've mentioned a few times, the governor's budget, but there are others that are possibilities, and we want to, we want to make sure that we're providing the most accurate projections at this point in the year, and we will continue to adjust based on all new information presented. And we'd also, at this time, as we look at potential shifts, we'd like to take a moment and actually build upon something that Board Member Visor mentioned and others have mentioned. We want to highlight a few of the reasons to honor our community, the district staff, the superintendent, and the board in terms of some of the financial highlights, and you heard some of those in the presentations earlier about the preparation. So a couple of items, and I'm glad that Mr. McAllister was here. We've mentioned that we have a AAA rating from the Fitch Rating Agency, and that, that has significant impacts year-over-year for the community, and that does take the entire community, because that's not just based on the district's finances, that's also based on the county, and we have a close working relationship with the county, their investment pool, their high rankings, and that's all of us working together, along with positive cash flow. And I really want to highlight the new staffing processes that, we went into new places this year that really made sure that we were holding to the most appropriate staffing possible to ensure we weren't creating unfunded positions. So all of those things together are some elements to really reflect as positive outcomes in terms of our financial footing, which leads to our, our staff recommendations to the board on moving forward. So we are recommending a positive certification, which means we expect to fulfill our financial obligations this year, next year, and the year out. And to balance the budget, we have a third bullet, as you approve the first interim, if you vote that way, to make across-the-board cuts to central office, as noted in the three buckets, and direct the executive team to identify recommended eliminations to central office programs and services. So that is our recommendation to the board, and at this point, I'll pause and take questions.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to accept staff's recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Ottinger. We have a few public speakers. We've Citizen, Jeffrey Bennett, Carlos Mejia, and Derek Burner, and we'll give two minutes each to each speaker.
So the board wants to label this budget as positive, but it's the board's poor decisions that have caused the budget deficits year after year. And Evans says that California is 46th in the nation. That's old data. It's not true. It's more like 22 to 25 in the nation. You've had an increase of 25 to 30% of money coming to this district. And John Lee Evans says that San Diego has the highest grad rate, high test scores, nationally recognized. Sounds like there's plenty of money. Martin poured money into Lincoln, poured money into Lincoln, and yet, the CAS math results show 72% of the students' standard was not met, and English standard was not met. And the district per pupil, according to the Legas figures, is 12,521. That's 1,129 over the national average reported four days ago. So, 96% salaries and benefits, that's the board's decision to give generous raises that no employee in the private sector received. That was a bad decision, so bad that classified was slammed with a pay cut and layoffs. So it's the classified people that paid for the board's poor decisions, as did the students. The board operates under an illusion that Barrera bucks and Martin money has no limits. That's how you've been operating. The public is not told the facts, that there's plenty of money. It's poured in since 2013. It's done nothing but go up, 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 and that's not counting the bond money. I counted how many bonds there are on my property taxes, 24 bonds, 24 bonds, and then the parents that pay for the field trips and the school supplies and the instruments and, you know, all the other stuff, add another $300. It's not
Thank you.
...a money problem, it's a mismanagement problem.
Hello, board. Thank you for your great presentation. I, I know it's very challenging, given the various factors coming in. While we do have increased funding through one stream, the shift to some of the pensions that are a greater liability than the, than the funding that we're getting makes a very challenging process. And I, I'm encouraged that the site is for a positive budget. That, I think that's a great goal for our district, especially with things like that increase. We want to be prepared for our, our kids in the future. So I really want to thank you guys for having that in the site. I, I am somewhat concerned still on the specifics of what the, the cuts are, and I'm, I'm really hoping for community engagement on, on understanding that, and it sounds like a lot of that might have been based on some of the feedback you've had, and I really look forward to hearing how those can be affected, because I think that's really important, because right, we're, we're only looking at being positive with 47 million in cuts. So that's, that's something that we have to look at and make sure those cuts are right and aren't going to have negative impacts that weren't foreseen. I just want to point out, we had, you guys did some great solutions last year, last year, in order to figure out how to reduce some of the impact there, but then there were some unintended consequences with low staffing levels and things that we've been dealing with this year, that, that we want to be better this year at projecting some of those secondary impacts that maybe you're excited that we get there, but, but now we have another problem. So I encourage real careful consideration on that, and maybe rather than a positive certification at this point, making sure those are identified before going ahead and saying, "Yeah, we've done it, we've been positive," you know, but I really applaud the efforts, and hopefully we can move forward and continue great services even with the challenges that are presented. So I want to thank you guys for your effort on that.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Good evening, board. Carlos Mejia with SDA. As the district begins to set its budget priorities for the upcoming school year, it is of the utmost importance that you, the elected leadership of this district, take stock in what transpired last year. As a board, you authorized cuts to the budget, which ultimately led to issuing over 900 layoffs. To educators, a decision which we still are feeling the effects of at our sites today. Fortunately, SDA and the district managed to negotiate a SIRP agreement, which helped alleviate some of the district's budget deficit, as well as provide for the needed recall of the majority of our educators, a majority, but not all. Several of our educators, mainly those holding positions within the special education department, educators who had to make the hard decision to leave the district or risk not having a job in the coming school year. As SDA reviews and evaluates the district's first interim budget, we are concerned that in the midst of the district presenting to the public that there is an ongoing budget deficit, that there is substantial increases from the original budget, which was passed in September of this year, to what is being projected for the coming 17-18 school year. An increase of 16.8 million in capital outlay, 12.6 million in services and other operating expenditures, an additional 19.6 million in books and supplies. All in total- All in total, an additional 49.1 billion. Meeting the needs of our students means making our educators and the supports they need a priority in the budget. A repeat of last year cannot happen. It must be avoided. Our students, their families, and our educators need you to make them a budget priority, and not the budget be balanced on the backs.
Good evening. Derek Burner, President, San Diego Unified Council, PTA. Like many others, we're deeply concerned with the current state of the district's budget. I'm well aware that this picture is going to change significantly in January, again in May, but it's never too early to begin advocating. Although it's encouraging to believe that the district is not planning to cut school site budgets, we all know that the impact on our students is going to be significant. With an increased number of programs becoming centralized in the last few years, saying that we're not going to cut, or that we are going to cut centralized programs is devastating. Libraries, music, English language support, nurses, and more have all become centralized in the last few years. Cutting any more from these areas is going to be detrimental to our kids. It means that schools that are already running on skeleton crews are going to get even worse. We would encourage the district to look at giving the indecision in these type of programs and staffing back to the school sites. Each community within our district has vastly different needs, as you all know. Local control needs to become local again. Any cuts in these centralized programs also needs to be allocated in a per-pupil format instead of uniform cuts per school, then allowing a more equitable system. Cuts at the central office are of equal concern. A major concern is the lack of transparency in regards to funding and spending at the district office. Although every school site budget is posted online, central office departments are not. I've requested this from most all of you on the diocese tonight. How do we truly know what is being cut and by how much when the data is not available for the public to view? Lastly, I want to speak specifically about the slide labeled "Celebrations." Yes, I realize that Greg and his team have made great strides to decrease the impact on this budget shortfall, but it's not time to celebrate. We have another round of major cuts. Is it really time to celebrate? Parents, teachers, members of the community are not celebrating. They're crying, they're frustrated, they're working harder than ever to pick up the slack after yet last year's cuts. They're... Sorry. There are amazing things to celebrate in the district, but this is not one of them. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, speakers. We've got a motion and a second. Board, questions or comments? Vice President Beiser.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the thorough report, Mr. Ottinger, and your staff, you know, really trying to figure out how do we continue to balance the budget with increasing costs and expenditures in different categories that you talked about. One of the things that you also mentioned was the LAO budget projections, which have forecast several billion-dollar increase in Prop 98 revenue to public schools in California next year. And I'm having a little deja vu, because we had the same kind of projections from the LAO last year, but we cannot use the LAO's budget projections for our budget. And we are bound by law to use the Governor Brown's January budget proposal. And so this is just a preliminary draft, and then we need to wait and see what kind of proposal will Governor Brown present, and then we have to use his budget proposal, even though it may change and usually always changes over the next few months. And one of the other challenges is, even if Governor Brown's January budget proposal does increase revenue to Prop 98 public schools, sometimes, over the last many years, he'll earmark certain dollars as one-time funds, which cannot be used for ongoing expenses. And so that's another budget challenge that we need to take a look at. So I really appreciate this very cautious approach until we can find out more information in January from the governor's budget proposal. Thank you.
Dr. McCrory.
I concur with Vice President Beiser's comments, but also want to talk about solutions that are revenue solutions, not just cuts. And you brought up the point, Greg, about the relationship between enrollment and ADA. And while we are getting better, the last, on page 119, you talk about, it presents the enrollment numbers. We have gone from a 92.6 ADA percent of our enrollment to 96.5, and I'm wondering, while we may wait for the governor's proposal, maybe we could also start with improving student attendance. And if we do that, I'm wondering, what does 1% of an ADA do for us?
So we can get back to you on the exact 1%. I think that you bring up, the overarching principle you bring up is square in our sites, and I want to bring it back to President Barrera mentioned in earlier, and also Vice President Beiser mentioned in earlier, bond presentation when we talked about not just the bond, but overall our facilities and all of our efforts that we are, as an entire community, working together to create environments worthy of our children that unlock the genius. And those aspects, everything in the LCAP, everything we heard in the LCAP, SGT, SSC, those are our beacons, those are our lights, in terms of, those are the things we're going to be going to, to do exactly that, because we have an incredible story to tell, and that's unfortunately not the focus of this presentation. However, it's an incredible point, because all of the other work around the LCAP is exactly what's going to drive this presentation into those positive outcomes and those positive revenue elements for our budget and for our system.
An additional comment. I guess that in today's paper, it talked about ADA across some of the schools within the state and in California, and in San Diego County. Some of our schools, and primarily our charters, are in the 20, you know, above 24%. They're in the 24 to 75%. And we're at, you know, we're in the high 90s, we're in the mid 90s. So we're definitely doing a whole lot better than many schools, many districts, but I'm just wondering, you know, if we could begin now, every day, tending to attendance every day, reduce the chronic absenteeism, that that's a positive impact that we can have on our budget going forward.
That's something that, I know that Crawford Cluster was talking about that yesterday. They're beginning to really focus on the fact that they need to do some things to get out there to help improve that. And we recognize that a part of it is just capturing the interest of the children, finding out what can we do to offer some programs that will attract them in terms of, like the innovation sites and so forth. We just need to work on that better as a system, meaning everybody.
All right, Dr. Evans.
Yeah. Well, we had that one graphic here, and there's this question I'd put to the staff, which is, how much increase would we need from the state to just stay status quo? And status quo is basically doing the programs and staff we have right now with 0% increase for all of our bargaining units for the next year or two. So it's a pretty sparse budget, but that's what we have to have. And people don't realize that even as we're continuing with the same thing, that the amount of the pensions going up, the amount of the health and welfare benefits and other factors are actually requiring us to have $59 million more than last year to do the same thing that we're doing this year. And so I think it needs to be very clear, as we're talking about this early on, this happens every year, those of us who are on the board are opposed to all of these cuts. We really, we're in total agreement with those who are speaking about, "Don't cut this and don't cut that," because we think we've already cut way beyond where we should cut. However, we can't pull money out of our pockets. There's been discussion about, you know, there's certainly the issue here at the state level. There are lots of different statistics about what California funding is. And it's true, you can look at ratings of California that will range from 22 to 46, but you have to look more carefully at those figures, because some of the figures do not take into consideration the cost of living in the different states. But really, when it comes down to per-pupil funding, we're ranking very low. And we're talking about, we need $59 million, but we've already calculated, as that graphic shows, we really need about $350 million just to do what the public and educators believe that we need, the teachers, the counselors, the nurses, the librarians, the bus drivers, and all of the programs that we need to have in our schools, which would be about a 25 or 26% increase of what we have right now. But right now, for this year, we're advocating, at the very least, to stay even, to stabilize our schools. And when there are comments constantly about the cost of salaries and people, this is a people business. And as we get more and more frugal in terms of how we use our supplies, obviously, the percentage of our money going into salaries is going up. But anyone who would say that our staff, our teachers, or our classified staff is somehow generously overpaid is not dealing with reality. It's not an easy situation for anybody here to say, "Okay, we can't afford any pay increase right now, because we're just looking at reality." But the reality is that we need to do a lot better with our teachers and with all of our staff. So there's two parts here. We really need to advocate for the proper money from the state. We're going to open up the envelope in January to find out how much money the governor is proposing to increase our budget, and it's very simple. If it comes out to exactly 59 million, we can continue doing, very difficultly, but doing what we're doing this year. If it's more than 59 million, we can actually restore a little bit of what we have lost in the previous year. But if it's less than 59 million, that is the state telling us that we need to make cuts. So one of the things that we're doing on this action item tonight is we're doing a positive certification. We have proven, particularly last year and the years leading up to it, that we can balance our budget in very, very trying times. And we will do it again, and we will do it this year, and we'll do it in the two years coming out. We will live within our means. We will only spend the amount of money, because that's all we can do, that's given to us by the state. We've heard tonight from various audits, the bond money, everything, that we have a very high credit rating. The district is very fiscally responsible, and we're going to continue to do that. But we have to address this issue of California is not adequately funding education. One person said to me, and I've said this before, at a cluster meeting, they were unhappy that we only had librarians one day a week, and they said, "We need to have it more days." And I said, "I agree." She said, "Well, then do it." And I said, "Well, we don't have the money." And she said, "Well, then just raise the taxes for the money. We need to have this," and not realizing that the board does not have that authority. But we really need to look forward, particularly in November on the ballot, in terms of the commercial real estate loophole on Proposition 13 really needs to be overturned. We need to be able to have local measures, providing local funding for schools, so that we can have what we need in our schools here in San Diego. And these are the long-term solutions, but for right now, we have to deal with what we have each year, and that's what we will do. So that's why I'm supporting the staff recommendation on this item.
Great, and thank you, Dr. Evans. Without further questions or comments, please vote on the motion to accept staff recommendation. Passes 5-0. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Yeah, great job.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to the superintendent's consent agenda. There were a number of items that were pulled. I'll move all items that were pulled. Okay, and do we have a second?
Social agenda.
Okay, and Citizen, you have signed up to speak for items J-1, J-7, J-8, J-11, J-21, J-23, J-31, and J-32. We will give you three minutes to speak to all of those items.
Three minutes for all of them?
That's what you have.
Wow. I'm going to file a complaint. So regarding field trips, I have a response from the California Department of Education that the school district will refund the $100 that these students paid for a field trip to SeaWorld. You can't charge kids for field trips. It's illegal, and you're not above the law, and you should stop doing it. And regarding the Avid, I support that. The agreement for a drug dog, the school district has a drug dog. I don't understand why I keep seeing these little items come up, that we're paying an outside vendor for drug dogs. That's just a waste of money. You said, "We got a drug dog, and we wouldn't have to spend this money anymore," but you are. Fast play athletics, that's a good thing. I've been complaining for years about abusive coaches, about coaches that have very negative effects on the players, and that's a really good thing. And then I was looking at all of the legal matters. There are one, two, three, four, five legal matters, ones for $500,000, and other ones for $400,000. That's a lot of money that you're spending. Somebody needs to take a look at the legal office and why they're constantly coming forward and asking for outside people. They got a big, big, big raise, all of them, everybody from every legal clerk all the way up to the general counsel. They all got big raises, and they said, "You know what? We're not going to do this outsourcing anymore. We're going to do it in-house, but you give us more money, and we'll do it." And that's not happening. Instead, we keep coming up with all of these contracts for outside counsel. You guys need to ask, what is that department spending? Because I just looked at the lawsuits, and this was just November, 161, six paid out, and nobody sees this. So this needs to be brought up to the board when you're looking at cuts. There's something wrong in that office.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the remaining superintendent's consent agenda items. Please vote. Okay, great. And finally, tonight, we will, to item H-7, conduct our election of board officers. Oh, I'm sorry, we've got two non-agendas. Yeah, Derek Burner and Jeffrey Bennett, you have three minutes each.
I'll be very, very quick, because I was not prepared. I'm concerned about the request for proposal that was put on the district website yesterday for an exchange of real property, exchanging this facility, the IMC and Ballard Center, for a new ed center. Want to remind you all that the Ballard Center is the only place available for parent groups, the DAC, CAC, D-LAC, PTA, to meet and conduct our business. So we hope that any new facility, if this was to transpire, has room for parents as well, and also that any new facility is near public transit. It does not state it in the RFP at all, it just says "major freeways." As we know from Ms. Reed's presentation from the DAC tonight, there's a problem getting parents to come to things. Transit, which is readily available at the Ballard Center, needs to be available for any new facility as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
I pretty much want to echo Derek's comments on that, and the other part that I was a little concerned about is if this is going to encompass a new parent center as part of the solution, the parent groups weren't talked about, about requirements for what that center might need to look like. And as we talked, as the DAC was asked by Board Member Whitehurst Payne, you know, are there availability for remote sessions and things like that? And I think that there's certain, for the DAC, which is federally guidelines, there might be some federal things that we have to do in order to have that certified as an in-person meeting or something like that, but I want to make sure that we're looking at those requirements, so we can ensure that whatever we do new meets the needs of the parents in the community. And it was a little troubling that those groups weren't polled as far as what requirements might need to be for the RFP, as far as the building requirements.
Okay, great. Thanks, Derek. Okay, I just want to make an initial comment on our elections for board officers. I think it's been, I believe, an important principle that boards have shared since the time I've been elected to this board, which is that every elected member of this board is fully capable of exercising leadership, and I believe strongly that a mature organization shares leadership. And so I think the idea of an annual rotation of board officers is an important strategy that serves us effectively. Sometimes we've veered away from it a little bit, but I think it's important to stick with that strategy. And for that reason, I believe that the rotation would lead us to the election of Kevin Beiser as our president tonight, and John Lee Evans as our vice president tonight. And for that reason, I intend to vote in that way. Any other comments before we vote? Dr. Evans?
Yeah, I'm abstaining from voting. I'm not participating in the process, so choose from the other four.
Thank you. Okay, so the process is, you've got a yellow ballot to vote for president. Please, if everybody could cast your vote, and we'll turn that into Ms. Ward. Please, if everybody could cast your vote, and we'll turn that into Ms. Ward.
We're doing the president--
President first.
Right now.
Yep.
Because it's a secret.
Yeah.
Trustees McCary, Beiser, Whitehurst Payne, and Richard Barrera have voted for Kevin Beiser. Trustee Beiser, you've been elected president.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, President Barrera and board. I really appreciate the trust that you've given me to lead the board next year, and I'll work very hard to do everything we can for our kids.
Thank you. Okay. Now, please, with your green ballot, cast your vote for vice president.
Now, point of clarification. Dr. Evans, you said that you're abstaining from the process. Does that mean that you don't want to be considered for vice president?
In that event, then, I'd like to publicly state that if Dr. Evans doesn't want to be the vice president, then, you know, would Dr. McCary or Ms. Whitehurst Payne be interested in a leadership role on the board?
There's a question. So, Sean, does that mean if elected, you would not accept?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Please cast your vote for vice president.
And then to respond, I would then, in that case, my vote would go for Sharon Whitehurst Payne.
Thank you.
So trustees Beiser, Whitehurst Payne, Barrera, and McCary have all voted for Sharon Whitehurst Payne. Dr. Whitehurst Payne, you are the board's vice president.
Congratulations. Okay. Pass the gavel to our president.
We are adjourned.
All right. Thank you.